15:06 PM, fiscal year 2019, uh, 2020.
I'm having to go to the back and agree with you there because it's the first place.
Councilor Brennan?
Present.
Council Wyng? Council Science, Brennan?
Here.
Council Meyer?
Here.
Yeah, we'll give them a few minutes. Would you have any problems with this?
Being of this budget, people can't make it, this is actually their tax dollars. There's no reason they should really be in the back, I mean, they should... The way the people...
We're not hiding anything. You voted on it, Brandon, you raised your hand, you said you wanted them in the back, Brandon. You can't change the rules every single minute.
We're not changing the rules, but if they're over here on the side, Mayor, they're not really obstructing anything.
It doesn't have anything to do with obstruction, Brandon, obstruction comes into play when they're in an aisle. Read the ordinance.
The aisle's right there, Mayor.
That's what obstruction has to do with, Brandon, the aisle, not the row, they sit in rows.
Okay, if you're changing...
Change the ordinance, next meeting, change it.
There's nobody here.
There's nobody here, who is she obstructing, that's what I want to know.
My campaign.
Nobody said they're obstructing, that's the rules, Brandon, you voted for that rule. You raised your hand and said, yes, we want the cameras in the back. It doesn't have anything to do with obstruction.
It was also said that if it was packed...
Okay, listen.
Yes.
This is fair warning from you, that's an outburst, the meeting is in order, okay? No more warnings for you.
Hey, guys.
You doing all right, sir?
I'm good.
How are you?
Good.
How are you, sir?
I'm good.
Council Brennan?
Present.
Council Wyng?
Here.
Council Science?
Uh, present.
Council Meyer?
Here.
Council Meyer?
Here.
All good.
Thank you. Councilman, send a prayer, please, sir.
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together again. Ask that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, understanding, kindness, and caring so that we can accomplish the task that you voted for. In your son's name, we pray, thank you.
Amen. Completations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have another five budget workshop. This is kind of how I'd like to do this, did you guys want to do it a different way, that's why I think we need to go through each and every department? I'm sure everybody had a little bit of time to mark up their budgets at home this weekend. If they didn't, um, I think we can do that now, if anyone can now. Uh, starting with general fund, Brandon, do you have anything? Any questions?
Just looking at all the newly highlighted items on here, I wonder if we can talk about this. Sales tax and especially ad valorem taxes, where we gain these numbers, garbage collection to the sports complex, are they charging us more for that sports complex as well?
Some of those, Brandon, the current ad valorem taxes, how do we figure those? Because, look, look at your actual, based on 531-19. We were, that's out of the end of May, so that doesn't count June, July, August, or September. So you're looking about two-thirds of a year, you're looking at eight months. And so if you take the 875 and you divide it by the eight months and then add to it, or you can say divide it by two-thirds and add a third to it, you're going to come up with your estimated amount of 1,313,328,36. I mean, if we look at this every year, about what's projected to come in, is when we look at our projections. I think Leslie just punched it up and showed you.
Okay.
Now, if you want to ask about, well, if you're going to sales tax, we use sales tax the exact same way, it's historical in nature. And we base it off, we have an eight-month history, and we use that eight-month to project the next four months. Usually stays the same. Sports complex, this is a true story about the sports complex, both in a lot of that, and you're looking at your, like, the total garbage collection. We really don't know what some of that stuff is going to be, that sports complex is new to us.
That's revenue, that's what it's...
Yeah, and that's going to be the revenue part. But we put in, like, it says actual budget, 11,000 revenue, we really don't... That's just an odd creature number, we use $25,000 because we're not going to have that sports complex up until January. So I'm only going to have January, February, March, April, May, June, before we start next year's budget, on six months, to even start, to see what a monthly, you have a six-month history. What was the next question?
No, that was...
Oh, the rent grant, I turned that in at the end of tax tops fiscal year, that's why that hasn't been turned in yet. Tax top fiscal year ends one year, one month for our tax, uh, that we don't have to reenter our rent grants every month.
The fire district as well, if you go down to 308.02, fire district shows the...
Hold on, let's have it page that one.
Page one, still page one.
Page one, okay.
Towards the bottom. Actual budget for 18 and 19 shows 250, 250,000. Uh, we're getting 1,149,99, and we're going to budget, shows 1,150,000, is that one?
Fire district line?
Yes, fire district line, yeah.
308-02?
Yes.
250,000.
Are we anticipating, I mean, is that revenue coming in, or is that what we're going to spend, I mean?
That's not revenue. This is figures.
That's not revenue, so we're expecting more calls to... 120,000, I mean, yeah, 121,000, I'm sorry, I jumped off the line. Okay, still at that, are we expecting more calls that, or are we just going on estimates?
This is what we get, based on the emergency services district. When was the last check for the positive from him?
It was running behind.
Okay, it's running behind, so I don't have a good estimate. I have six months to the nine months to work on that one.
Okay.
Just because we haven't got the EST dollar check.
And that's the same thing, you take the 81,000 divided by six, times 12, and that's how you...
Yes.
Yeah, right now, we're going to, yes, I understand, but, okay, so...
You have any other questions on that department, Brandon?
No, I'm good.
Leslie?
I'm good.
Cindy? Brendan? Justin?
No, um, there's nothing else in here that jumps out that's a huge change?
No, the only, we're only going to have one huge change, and it's not technically a huge change, and I'll tell you all about it in a little bit, and that's just my concerns about where we're at. And that's going to be one of the expenditure parts, not the revenue parts. And you have to remember, the only thing I'm going to tell you about the sports complexes, we're new, so it's uncharted waters, we're just guessing.
Approximation?
Yes.
I'm guessing, but...
Well, we're probably the ones there, approximation.
Okay, general fund expenditures, Brandon?
I'm good with it.
Leslie?
I'm good.
Cindy? Brendan? Justin?
Looking through, um, professional services?
Yes, sir.
I see that we budgeted 16, we spent 130, we're estimating 93.
But I'm hoping we don't have to incur a lot of those again.
That would be like Hanson?
Yeah, well, it'd be Hanson, Hanson Attorney Fees, it's half of our annual financial audit, and then our monthly bill, which is police care.
Gotcha.
But you've got to remember, Hanson ran over on us because we ran, I'm running ahead on the water project, so I'm, I'm hoping that's not going to be ours come soon next year. I mean, what do y'all... Amanda and I kept looking at that, we just think that's the best way to figure it out right now.
I was just asking, just to make sure.
Yeah, it's so good. I'm trying to feel the way down right now compared to what they are, but what killed us is I have not got a bill from Stan McCarthy, and those bills are huge when they show up, and that proves our budget. But that was all on that CCN thing, and so that's what we worked on.
That's all, yeah?
Yes, sir, that's completely done, it's all in the bottom.
Okay, when you go down and look at the bottom, 560.10...
Okay, one second, Brandon, okay, you go ahead, Justin?
I'm, I'm sorry, but that's not...
561, Brennan?
560.1 and 560.11, so it's training, city council travel training. When you look at those two, you, those still fit good, or we're going to, you think we should raise them up? How many of the, are we... If more of us want to go to training, will that number be...
Well, like, as of 531-19, all this is spent, and it feels like it's 232 dollars.
That's one I had worked up.
Because we got Cindy, you can go take a class, I don't know, maybe Leslie, or Brenda, or Justin, later on, might want to take a class.
I think, I think the new elected official workshop, I think it's just her travel and her fee that she pays for it, do they offer that for free, Cindy? Is that, uh...
I think the registration, I don't know, is it free?
I can't, no, 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 the hotel's not free.
I think the registration is like 250.
Is it on the pay? 470.
Yeah, 470.
There's a fee, there's a fee.
Well, and she has plenty in there to cover that, uh, but if, I don't know what you're asking, Brandon, I miss your specific question now. There's plenty for Cindy to get.
She's going this this week, you're going August.
Oh, this is going to be the new festival year.
This is where she's going this, this way.
Yeah, so progress is going to come out of this budget right here.
Do we each have an individual amount, or is it just...
There's $2,000 in there at one time. That's, and that's what you guys are going to put in there.
It's just one month, um, we use it as a...
I mean, if y'all...
But 1,800 is less...
It's 2,000 is what we put in there, 232 is what we use this year.
Yeah, so, you know, we're only using $200 this year.
Was this, is that 232 applied to Barbara and Amanda when they go to training as well?
No, that's just for city council.
That's just for city council, straight, I mean, does each five, we don't... Y'all have its own budget, correct?
I actually want to reduce it.
At least like 330 dollars for each counselor. Maybe I have each person's...
But you can only go to newly elected training one time, I know there's other things that you can go to, and if you look at the history here, the city can be, the budget at 18, spent 348 bucks is the estimated, but we've only spent 232. And now we're going up, I don't think we need to go up, I think we need to go down.
I'm just saying, because if more of us want to take classes down the road, I mean, I can't speak for Cindy, I can't speak for Brenda, or Justin, or even Leslie here, but if somebody wants, they see a class somewhere in there, be like, you know, that's interesting, that might help me out, you know, more knowledge, more power.
Yeah, they have a lot of things online that are free also.
But that takes away from interacting with other cities and seeing how they, they can do things, you know, a lot of ideas are thrown out those conferences.
That's true.
It's good to interact with other cities, you know, they get ideas from us, we get ideas from them, it doesn't hurt to talk to other cities as well.
I think 2,000 is a good number for training, especially since we're not utilizing it.
I mean, yeah, we should use it if we really did, arguably, we could raise it.
We really should.
Yeah. We should use it for...
I know, I would try to.
You know.
Get into your space.
No, you're fine, I'm just, I'm going to...
We always, you know, we'll come back to Amanda later. If you go overboard, and it's because you didn't, it's a training that, you know, that you really wanted, but if you're perceiving something right now, I would rather put it in there now than go back and amend, because it's really not an unforeseen, or unforeseen circumstance or an emergency, if you have an idea that there might be something you're wanting to do.
But that's 10 times we increase what we use, there's a amount to be justified. There's $2,000 there, we've only used 232 dollars. I mean, we spent how many days, weeks, cutting budgets, and we're going to increase this, but we aren't using it, it, that doesn't make sense to me.
Are we not important enough?
If y'all, if y'all...
It's not anything to do with that.
It kind of does, because if you want to take away from us going to learn, it does make a difference, I mean...
You can increase it, all you have to do is say what you would want to put in there, she'll mark it down, but when we get to the end of this budget, you're going to see what I'm talking about. We had to tread a lot of different things in a lot of places.
So, like I said, right now we spent 232 dollars, so no matter what Cindy spends, the election officials train, she's following.
I mean, we have the TMR conference, I'm not saying, Cindy might want to go, Justin, I mean, this is...
I can't go to any trainings right now because I have a new job, and so I can't take the issues, so I'm not doing any...
They're flexible, don't let me go to that TMR conference, that's a very, that's a healthy conference, you got passes to choose from.
Can we just put a question mark back to it? You know what, yes.
Okay, let's do that.
That's what this is for, you put what you want to do, and then we send it to them, and they do what you want to do. Okay, who else?
I just had, I just had a quick question, um, so I saw on page four, the Christmas festival went up 6,000, is that because of more anticipated, um, things? Okay. Um, and then the spring break got drove all apart, has seen that that's anything with that?
Yes, that's something to do for the kids during spring break, the Christmas around here, maybe, um, a lot of labels are apart, and just something for all the kids in the lawn, halftime.
I think we're talking about the junk, yeah, that's lots too.
Is that going to be a weekend event, or is it going to be...
It'll be on the weekend, it'll be one day on the weekend.
It'll be on the weekend, okay.
A lot of money.
Yeah, that kind of seems a little excessive, but we can always put a mark by it and come back to it.
If y'all, if y'all decide that that sounds like we want to do that, yeah, now, if you look at...
Did we get an estimate on it, is that where the 20,000 came from, or is that just...
We're going to have benders, or is this going to be like a...
No, no, there's definitely going to be benders.
That's what I'm saying.
No. So, who's the science, what, I mean...
This is just an idea that's, and this is just an idea that's brought up.
So it's like, so it's making ideas, and then we put it in here, and they all review it, and...
But, for our children, we, you know, people continue to say, why are the kids out in the street, why are the kids, but we don't, we still have a gang thing for them to do. So everything that we can do for our children creates a stronger environment for them to be in a positive place instead of a negative place, and that you need to think about.
Oh, I know, I agree with you there.
I think maybe it should be a lower amount for now, until we figure out how it goes, and then if it's a good thing, then we can increase it next time, so maybe just not that much.
Because 20,000 is going to rent a lot, a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so it's going to be...
Just maybe we can change it.
Yeah?
Is this going to be a special community project thing, or is it going to be city?
It's something new, so I don't, I mean, I don't know, it's just...
It's an idea right now, so...
And it's in this whole... Sorry, I was just going to say, you said it was a one-day event, correct?
Yes.
I wonder if maybe we should just do five, I mean, you can rent a lot of inflatables for 5,000 dollars.
No, you can't. No, really, you can't, they're, they're, the market is unbelievable right now.
Well, we just, my family just rented some about two weekends ago, and it was, it was one of the inflatable water sites, it was the biggest one, they had it, it was 360 dollars for the day, actually, two days, it was over the weekend. It was a place out of Victoria.
Yeah, we did get that number.
Do they have their...
Then we got it the whole weekend.
Yeah, that's true.
From Sandoval, I rent, I rent on Thanksgiving, I rent from Sandoval, we do a deal for the kids for Thanksgiving, uh, in our backyard.
And I know, I don't know to the extent that James Rosales still has, but I know he has a lot of things he's doing.
Have you moved it to 10, we're going to let us think about it a little bit, and figure out what, why, give it some.
I would actually like to make it at five, and do what you can, and five, 10,000 is a lot of money for... Y'all just telling each other on here?
What about if we met in the middle?
Seven, five, four?
Like I said, if this year it goes good, and next year we want to do something more than four, than this one, well, yeah.
Is this going to be like inflatables, no drink, I mean, this...
It's a new item.
So we're going to...
Like I said, what we've worked with is the idea right now.
And I wanted to raise your attention, a 610 of Settlemore, it's a downtown revitalization project, that's also known as the qualification money, and then they had another...
Which one was it?
610.
610, that's that one, yes. And some of that money had, was taken out of the, uh, our fund, our Christmas fund, so we can push that money, there was another place in the budget, unification or something that we took out, so that's why this one has to be there. It looks like we spent no money, but there was nice.
Are we going to do anything with it this year?
Yes, because it was in the budget twice.
Okay.
And so I wanted to leave it to where it did say, like, decorations or something, that makes no sense, because then we're hanging all these decorations. This is technically, you know what this is, this is the fund that Jennifer Johnson and the Settlemore started, that's the, this is their original fund, so I put it back in as the original fund.
Is it like for finishes downtown, and just...
Whatever they want, like plant, you know, they talked about one time...
Making downtown look better.
They talked about getting pots and putting flowers or trees, or, and then, you know, uh, one of those little things that they like to make, it's flags and little banners, oh, yeah, all that.
Is it necessary?
Yes, if we take it out, it's going to cause...
Did we use it this year?
We used it out in a different lineup.
Okay.
Yeah, decorations under streets and parks, and then downtown revitalization, we took that one out under streets and parks.
Okay. Anything else?
610.08, right under consulting. See five, going down to 2,500, when that...
We haven't used it.
We haven't used it.
So is that like consulting fees for any capital outlet project? The 610...
I think we used it for last year, no, we didn't, no, no, not this, not this year.
I believe everything's being absorbed under professional services.
It might be, it, it might be. That's what, I mean, we took it down to like 2,500 this year, even if we were to be in here, we could probably take it out, and then walk over to professional services. You're not sure about getting smaller every year, taking out lineups and putting them all together, like they should.
Well, then why don't you just move it then?
We can. And then, uh, 610.10, decent, 610.09, everything will change it.
Anything else on page four? From anyone?
Yeah, so we're going to move it, right?
Yeah, we'll move that out, we'll take it full.
So do we need to bring up professional services from 93 to 95, maybe?
We'll do that.
Okay.
We'll just change them out, how's that?
Transfer the pavement from 610.10, or, uh, 96,000, do we have anything pressed, maybe in the works to come back and repave these, these streets again? Just for a bigger project like we had back when it started in 2011?
You know, Brandon, a lot of the problems that I'm having with that, is our, our good streets are good streets, like this street is a great street, you know what I'm saying? You can go down that and really not have any issues, uh, but the streets that really need to be repaved, need water and sewer first because of the lines. If we just do another, like, like y'all did 2,011, if you just did another silo, we're just piling that asphalt up, it's not helping, and then we're causing people drainage problems. And so we need to replace more lines, and we have more lines, I don't know if y'all drove up by the old dog town, you might see it, it starts to build up, so we want to, we're replacing lines. So the paving's not as, I understand it's very important, but we want to replace those lines, we don't want to put new pavement down, tear up the pavement, so we're trying to be kind of, uh, prudent on that, we're trying to work that smart.
Are we waiting to paint to repair all the water lines before we get streets done, or what are we doing?
No, some streets we are doing, you know, if, if the water and the sewer, but some of these streets, the water and sewer is so bad, like if you look at HEB where we fixed that, or if you look at the bottom of Boo, or look at the bottom of Graham, when we fix them, uh, we end up digging up that new pavement right away, or something new right away. So we're trying to figure out where our worst spots are, and concentrate on those, like with East Main, sewer-water paving, and then the other ones, we're trying to figure out, uh, Russell, Rum, and Boo, they all have new water, and...
Their sewer mains are shot, and so is the basin, the subgrate below, that's why there's all the lateral movement on it. Instead of getting what we were supposed to get years ago, we got less, but we paid the same price. So you go over it, and you paved it originally, then every 10 years, you pave it again, you get the lateral movement because everything below is terrible, and it just keeps going on and on and on, so we'll be on that now, there's no...
But one of the reasons I want to do a lot of paving on some of those roads, is the water mains are too, um, yeah, no, they're, they're very shallow, and if I put paving on them, I'm a problem. And, and so we have money to replace them, I don't want to, uh, move them.
Okay, so we don't have like an estimate?
No, like, we just did, we're, we're kind of trying to work, like, down and keep going, we're trying to start at the water plant way, and do most of that first. You know, some of cottonwoods in good shape, some of cottonwoods not in good shape, but, uh, it looks better than a lot, but for us, with the other parts of the city. And we have, we've, like, if you look up there in your neighborhood, where there's like strips of pavement that big, and then there's like poachee everywhere, and there's strips everywhere, and we're just replacing a lot of that water line.
If you have all those holes over there on the two-inch metal line.
So we're trying to, we're trying to get some of the lines done, some of the sewer done, some of the paving done, like you saying, it's been one of our worst areas for forever, but once we finish it, it's going to be so nice, because it has new water, new sewer and paving.
And that's the process, we shouldn't be doing it all.
I mean, but they suffered a long time.
Water and sewer.
Every drop of water that we have to, that we dump on the ground, it costs the taxpayers lots of money, so we have to work on the, the water lines. Uh, we ended 1.9 million gallons of loss, that was here when we first got here, just by the money that was spent on blue street, Rum, and Russell, and Oasis, and, uh, the hillside area, the streets are reported.
So where are we now?
Yeah, what we just can't, you got gas mains, sewer mains, and so many other things, I mean, is that pitch five, anything for me, Brandon, pitch five?
Yeah, 530.06, the travel expense, who's that specifically for?
That's the police department.
Police department, I mean, the chief and all the, they're all, they're all going to be under this?
If they go somewhere, they travel, and...
Officers, I guess, I just say, because I know that they, they do go to quality training, I just say, that's going to be enough, well, chief, where's chief at, is he in here?
He did this with us, and he picked this number.
He picked this number?
Yeah.
Thank you, a thousand for travel expenses, that's good enough for you?
He says to travel.
Two thousand, well, yeah, right now, we're at 1,000, we're way, so that's 2,000, a thousand more is...
Right, correct. Okay. So there's travel, then you also have different, maybe you can put on, you have different life, right, uh, training?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's just the, as I understood them, just a...
If you need anything, you know, you can ask for it.
Majority of what we're doing now is, uh, online, but we do want to send something to the city.
Remember, they don't have modules, you know, like, uh, usually they'll take some of our cars.
So, you've spent about 9,200 dollars, and you're asking for 2,000, was this before you were in the position? Okay.
That was pre-...
Travel reimbursement? Okay.
Leslie, you have anything?
No, sir.
Cindy? Brenda?
No.
Justin?
The only other question that I have, is there any added positions within this budget for officers, and how many, if so?
Okay, now, the SRO is going to be in here.
And that, that SRO, from my understanding, is going to be, the schools paying for that SRO from school to school?
7525.
Oh, okay, so it is 75.
I'll have that ready for you on the next round, we need it, 7525, but to be able to all, um, the, um, residential tunnels ready, and I think it reads very, 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 very similar, I think, to where we have quarrels, which we redesigned with the Kennedy.
The only question I have about that, and I guess I think we should be able to talk about it since we're talking about it, is the salary, who gets the final say-so, you or the superintendent?
The chief.
Okay.
And, and, you know what, that's a good question, it's all school, not my resolution, who he answers to, how much is paid, benefit-wise, like, like, this is just something that came up, um...
He or she, sorry?
That's fine, we know who you are. Okay, TMRS, okay, that's, that's the benefit that we use, so that's the benefits that the SRO will give, but remember, the SRO was the school calendar, the same base as schoolwork. Then they count football games, and they're like, oh, yeah, well, can we do a, a court cheat, they're going to find him, I don't know where they're going to find this person or, they said we can do a club schedule, Sunday 8 to, you know, 12, and then, you know, 6 to 10, and we're like, no, 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 it doesn't work like that, it's simply a school position. School does not do extra for their events, it's going to be, it's going to go with the calendar, like, school dates.
So then, would there be, would there, would the school then pay like overtime for this officer, if they does basketball games?
They can talk about that, if we go through Kennedy, now, remember, once you get past the SRO, it goes back to Kennedy Police Department, for, and people...
That can just request that to us, and then it's applied to the, and we're so, we're providing transportation for them, correct?
We're going to try, you know what we're going to use, is we're going to, uh, to craft one of those expeditions that repeats and forgets, one of the older ones, and we just want to have that in front of the schools, make sure that, that the visibility's there. and we just wanna have that in front of the schools, make sure that, that the visibility's there, and we don't want to go out by any car, what if this position, what if the school decides they don't want it, or we decide, you know, it's a, it's a pilot program. And it seems like it's gonna work very well.
That was, that was my biggest question, is who does that person at the end of the day report to? I think it should be.
And they will have an office on campus.
It has to be. Um, does anybody else have any other items? Yeah, questions?
Since you're here, is there any other major item of interest that changed within your budget? That you can think of, or is there anything else that you're looking to acquire or buy? I knew you had talked about one of the traffic control trailers, or-
Yes, I believe that was all under, a couple of traffic control devices, uh-
That's under equipment?
Yeah.
Five ninety oh two.
Yeah, the main one with those, and then the handholds, but they're doing, uh, now we have thirty thousand. Those are, those are main.
And then, I, so then the thirty-three two oh five, is that another explorer?
I'm not sure.
Or the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This payment, two of the three payments, and then the chief has also requested twelve thousand dollars for a bomb car.
Yep.
No, no, I'm looking under cars and trucks, five ninety point oh four.
Yes, that's our payment, yes, ma'am, that's forty-five thousand.
That's our payment.
Our payment's twenty-one thousand two oh five, and then it's twelve thousand for a bomb car that he has requested.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Let's go to the department.
Gotcha, yes.
Chief, when is that parkway gonna be ready to go, when are we, you gonna start patrolling it?
I do, I've heard different estimates, anywhere from June next year to the end, I don't really know. I just wanna be prepared when it does kick off.
Okay.
As we get a little closer, I'm trying to get a better idea, but we wanna be prepared to patrol it because it's an isolated area.
I did see people walking out there.
Yeah, it's all, you shouldn't be out there right now.
Yeah, I was like, oh, there's people out there.
So then should we set a, should the oversight committee set a curfew now within the parkway? So if there are people in there, please?
You.
Well, actually the construction, the construction company has barriers, uh, the construction company is responsible for that area until it is finished. And we don't want to, because their bond and insurance covers that, because if they have a barrier and somebody crosses it, then they have broken a rule, but if we said we're gonna lease it, then we're, we're taking that away from them and making them not accountable for it. We can't, we, we, we shouldn't start leasing that until we have possession. When you're having something constructed, constructed, you don't actually have possession of, until that construction company releases it back to you.
Mine wanted to mention just that somebody crossed a barrier, because like I said, I saw people walking out.
And should, if somebody calls and complains about them, they, you can't bomb them, trespassing.
Okay, that was my question.
So if the company, if the company does call and complain, yes, there is, because there's fencing, it's private face evidence, and you're not supposed to go in there, so, yeah, so you could follow.
Okay, so we are getting another rig or trailer?
No, I'm going to get two, what we're looking at is getting two pole boat ones.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Then they're easier to move around and put them on a-
Telephone poles?
Telephone poles, and then all, then you, then you just put, uh, different, uh, clamps around town, and they just, they pop on and pop off easily, so once you put the clamps up, you can just move around, you can move it. And these ones also provide the, uh, traffic count.
So that, so it does provide, you know, along with it?
It'll give you-
Does it get speed?
And how many people were speeding, what percentage of this has-
What is your staff looking like, uh, what are you looking for, staff number wise? Right now, I know we've got, we're trying to face the problem, we've got any-
We just picked somebody today, as a matter of fact, uh, we just got somebody hired today for that, uh, position, so we'll be following you.
And you wanna add one more on top of that, correct?
S R O.
Anything else for the police department? No? Animal control, Brandon?
Animal control?
No, not that. Leslie?
Um... We got one person that does animal control.
Yes, sir.
Is there room in the budget for a person that can work with him part-time? Because there are lots of strays running around.
You know what, what, what happened Leslie, is our animal control officer had, had a little burnout going on, moved to another area, so we hired a new animal control officer, and the former animal control officer still loves him, and releasing is necessary. I mean, now if you want a second animal control-
I just want someone that's aggressively picking up the stray animals, because there's too many of them running around.
I don't think they have anywhere to go with the ones that do pick one, we only can hold somebody else? 'Cause this guy's pretty aggressive, he wrote that your news. So what do we need to do? I don't know, chief, what are your thoughts, I mean, he's on you, on your department.
I'm just supposed to be sitting here? No, we, uh, our new guy, our guy we do have, Ernie does really well, but there are limitations, exactly, we're talking about limitation on storage. Um, you can only keep them for so long, and now that the main society does a pretty good job of taking most of those, uh, the dogs, uh, cats not so much, but dogs. So Ernie, Ernie is doing a really good job, what we, the only issue we really run into is if like today, Ed Collins sick, you know, there's nobody today. On the weekends, we do have other city employees help on the weekends, but he does, he does a pretty good job. He does pick up as many as he can, uh, but you're right, there are, a lot of stray animals out there. He would love to help, but, you know, it's important, but he does a really good job.
And if there's somebody, if you wanted another person anymore part-time, I mean, we'll mark it down and try to put it in there.
I think we need to, I think we need to have, and, and, and we need a bigger holding facility, we need to look at what we need to do to have a larger holding facility, because, you know, we, we need to have something in place to get, you know, especially if you've got ticks and fleas and all the diseases that they carry, and, you know, they just find them down the road.
Are we, uh, citing people or?
Yes.
Ordinance for a doggy?
So if he picks a dog up, it's normal procedure is they have to pay to get the dog out, and then he cites him for dog alarm normally. That's for some reason not.
Yeah, it really doesn't, 'cause I can go up and down my neighborhood, and the dog can be, I get called on that all the time.
I, I know he does, he does.
And we can't be, you know, everywhere at the same time.
Yeah, I call him all the time, hey, dog, where are you?
I have to agree with that, part-time, something.
So maybe try a part-time position, just watch the numbers for, through this next fiscal year, and then see if a, a second unit position the city can afford it.
And, yeah, and then depend to, again, we'll run, we'll track the storage as well, how many we keep and make like-
How much would estimate be for a new building, like, uh, new building, uh, just, uh, shed, I'm gonna shed the whole, the whole thing.
I haven't, I've not even done the plan.
About half a million bucks, yeah.
You have to remember, you have to do all the, the, there's a lot of, put it in, there's a lot of-
Clients.
Let's add, before we move on to that, let's add twelve four eight, well, add twelve four eighty to the proposed two thousand nineteen twenty-five.
That'd be a part of that?
Yes, sir. Twelve, twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Is he certified yet, chief?
No, he is scheduled to go to the class, I can't tell you when it's on.
Okay, can he write citations if he's certified?
Yes, but as, because he is, uh, designated as animal control, he can't write citations.
And he usually has an extra room out there, the problem is that some of these animals that we did need a lot of care. And the ones case H O can take, they take, but we, we have got this, we have large, that will happen.
The city does not have the luxury of picking and choosing which animals they wanna keep, and what they wanna pick up, we have to take all of them. We run out of places to put them, and ultimately that part we go on the taxpayer, and I know it's a problem, animals running around neighborhoods, I don't think that I don't. We just have not come up with a solution, and we're, we're working on that. It's just, every, we add to that, if we put that on the taxpayer, it's like, man, where do we, what do we do with all these animals?
We need people to do spay and neuter, I mean, you know.
Well, there, actually, we need to, we need to create an ordinance that says that that's what happens when we pick them up, and somebody comes and gets them after X amount of days, I don't know the legality is on it, but you're definitely right.
A lot of places add that ordinance.
Stay in the ordinance.
Yeah, you can't pick them up unless you're staying.
The district department is just like every other department, we're, we're talking about years of not, uh, maybe not providing the best service. So now we're trying to take ketchup.
You fix that cat, you fix that raccoon, you go to people's house and they call it for snakes, um, you fix that animal off the road.
I'm not saying he's not doing a good job.
Oh, no, 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 we don't, I'm just saying, there's more constantly to be able to control.
No, we need somebody to help him, because he's not getting the job done that we need him to have done. Not that he's not doing a good job, but we, you know, having, having to help would help him.
Maybe we should look into an ordinance maybe this time.
Say, yeah, maybe.
You know what, I was like, uh, you look for one, just somewhere sitting, you know, I'm saying. Do you want to put that job on, I can.
And do we-
We'll have to look at it.
My dog was older, but my dog, oh, he was, soon as he was old enough, he was fixed.
Well, do we, um, in order for them to be released, do they have to be registered? 'Cause I had no idea that you had to register your dog, and I found, James found that out a few months ago. Um, but maybe also do that in there, in that ordinance as well, spay and neuter, and you must register your dog with the city of Kennedy.
I didn't know I had to register.
They're also required to have the rabies shots while it's-
Yeah, I got them, he has a rabies shot, all, all the shots.
Is that not, is that not a requirement?
State law.
State law. It's, uh, animal, animal or the Rabies Control Act of nineteen whatever the number was. You need a little, little, like, rabies, like, uh-
Is there anything else on animal control?
And, you know, there's, there's always a possibility, once our surplus in here, if that's gonna be that big of an issue, we can try to go to animal control officers.
I would like to see two animal control officers.
I, I mean, if we can afford it.
I mean, yeah, so we can put try to put in any-
But, but listen, it all has to do with supervision also. Well, if, you know, somebody just has to take the right tickets and asked if they're certified, why don't we put police officers to do that? I mean, that's what everybody else does, they can write tickets, they can arrest, they can do everything that they need to do. If we're gonna do it, let's do it full-fledged, why not?
If you designate some animal control officers, they do have that, they don't have one?
Ours doesn't have it.
He's, he's designated, he could, he's just saying, he says again, since he's designing his animal control, he does have authority to write citations, yes.
Okay.
There is, there, there is training you can go to, to, to be an animal control officer.
If he's gone through that.
Yeah, but the fact that the city has designated him as that position, it, it's like, uh, you could be the same, then you could designate somebody to go write card tickets if you wish. Once, once they're designated, and that position they can do.
Got you. Okay, so what do we, we need to sit down, uh, this isn't the time for, but we need to figure out what the police chief's plan is to make that department better. That's his department, do you want a second person there?
It would definitely have a lot.
Okay.
The, what I run into the most with animal control is when Ernie can't be here, um, for weekends. So if you went with two people, you could do some sort of overlap, or work several weekends. Because we'll go, we'll go several days without having-
I think I have enough in the budget to do two, I don't have-
I'm sorry, did you say we go several days without?
On weekends, on his days off.
Yeah, we can't do that. What did you say, Barbara?
I think we have enough money to put it over there. Leslie, yes.
Okay. Okay, anything else on animal control? Thank you.
That's the one that's twelve four eighty.
Twenty-five would change.
Twenty-five would change, cool, man.
And then all the fringe.
Right.
Vehicle, we need a vehicle.
Now they need a vehicle.
We have another expedition over there.
Oh. Okay, so nobody has anything else on animal control? Okay, var, uh, volunteer fire department, Brandon?
Yes, I was looking at the five ten point oh four elected officials and volunteers, all of us there, it's, for the last two years, it's been, I think, right at eighteen thousand, and we keep exceeding, and is there any way we can maybe perhaps go up a little bit for that?
We did exceed it.
Last year we exceeded, last year we exceeded.
This year almost fifteen thousand.
We're at fifteen thousand as of May, but we've been getting, we're getting the hot parts of the year, and we get those grass fires, pretty, pretty crazy rapidly, so we're maybe twenty thousand, if not twenty, instead of eighteen.
And two thousand pay.
That's what they do, I think, at their Christmas banquet, they each, our, uh, our-
Volunteer.
Like, per call, and it gives a certain amount per call, so that money's distributed in December.
Oh, so-
It's already been distributed for this whole, this whole year. So fifty two nine is the actual. Yeah, that's what they spent.
Yeah, the twenty-two is, that's, shouldn't even be there, because that's the formula that they use on all the other stuff, they take that number divided by eighteen times twelve, but this is, that is the number, fifteen two oh.
Anything else, Brandon?
No.
Also, do we have any, uh, update on the building?
Like, did I send y'all the update on the building? I think I gave a copy of it, with Louis Schreiber, with the volunteer fire department building, you like to build it up, okay, that?
Yeah, but we just took through the budget.
Well, they have the budget numbers, if we were to, but, but-
If they're not here, we're not gonna talk about it, we need to, if there's anything else on here, Brandon, please, let's go do this, 'cause it's gonna be a long time.
Well, I think it's under, under capwallet.
Total building structure.
Well, since this isn't really, we can still talk about it at another meeting.
It's, it's further in the budget, it's, it's under capwallet. Yes, it's in capital improvement, which is the last.
But I did, I have some, uh, stuff that I want y'all to read, I know I sent it to Brandon.
I think I did.
Yeah, with, with the building, where they looked at it, and what it was wrong with it.
Go down with the budget, the budget numbers.
No, because I did have an engineer come look it up.
And, um, the other thing was, uh, the chief, the truck that he has, I was wondering maybe we use that other expedition.
I'm out of expeditions.
Yeah, we-
Did I actually apply for another expedition?
You already do, I'll go see you. You know, that fire department's been neglected for many years, and that has just been neglected, so.
So the other-
Go ahead, just, no, go ahead.
The other capital outlet of one fifty down to one hundred, is that just for expenditures on the building? Or what, what is that like?
That's for that training center, parts of that training center.
Okay, okay.
I mean, one of the problems that we have with that too, is nobody's got any interlocal agreement, nobody's got the supplies, I don't think y'all can even play heavy. And see, that's what makes this hard, is we don't have any interlocal agreement, uh, we don't, nobody's given us any estimates, nobody's given us anything. And it's put in for a hundred fifty thousand, and then I was told, well, no, it's supposed to be a hundred now. So I don't know, because I haven't seen the agreement, it's, it's an approximation.
What do we do to get that agreement?
That's something that they're gonna have to provide us with.
We asked the last August, here we are coming here.
You're talking about the agreement.
You're talking about the fire department. She's talking about an agreement with the training center for the city of Kennedy.
Right.
Because the training center is gonna be in Corinth City, right?
Yes.
So we would have to have a agreement between, with, between us and Corinth City, to have you allow a use of that training center. And how it's gonna work, and what's gonna happen, who's responsible for what, and now all that should be in that agreement.
Oh, okay, I gave y'all a copy of that, it's the copy of policies and local agreement, that's what I gave y'all. The policies and local agreement, I showed it to y'all, we use those, the template over there, and I've been over to a few fire departments.
Right, and now, yeah, that's what the volunteer fire department's here, like last time or two times.
That's right, I knew I gave that to the fire department. Uh, and I'm just waiting on them to send me a marked version. I sent them a word version, I told them to go ahead and make all their changes and render, the same thing we did with the school, and we did that in three weeks. So that's all that there is for it.
Brandon, I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
I'm good.
I'm weak, let's get some of them.
No, I, when we get to the, the deal about the structure, I wanna look at that, but, uh, I, I want to, I want to see an agreement between our fire department and us, because there's some things that the fire department can make themselves knowledgeable for by doing that, and we still have, we still have yet to get that, right?
That's correct.
But all this, all the numbers aren't sure, correct?
Yes, I took them to agreement though, it's, it's their, I've gone to a couple of their meetings at night, it's their turn to provide us with their feedback.
You have any questions? What? Brenda? Justin?
I'm sorry.
I, I actually do, the zeros, can we do all of the zeros? Like, if we're not using something, um, five twenty point zero one. If we're not using it, they're, they're, I mean, they're buying office supplies, where, where are we billing those to? Postage is another one, but we took that one out. Uh, and I'm just gonna scan down, I don't expect you to have all these answers, I really truly don't, I, I think I know what's going on over here. Uh, minor apparatus and tools, janitorial, and we got a lot of zeros in here in this budget. And I know these things are being purchased, but who's keeping up with those?
Is the city purchasing for them or are they purchasing them themselves?
I, I don't, I don't know.
We don't purchase their office supplies.
They have their own account, their own.
That's what I thought, they have, they have their own checking account.
The city.
The city has no say.
So they're just not asking for the reimbursement?
No.
Okay. Uh, physical exams, we're not using those, we, we, we're gonna have to use those. I mean, I don't know how we'd have a firefighter without a physical exam. And I know that's not your deal, I'm just, we're talking about a training, ten thousand bucks, but we're only using eight hundred and fifty dollars. I don't have a problem with building a brand spanking new fire department, and we know how to do these things, and we can do those things. But there's a lot of things that we need to really seriously work on at the fire department. Uh, radio system, seven fifty, we use zero. Protective gear, three thousand, we use zero. Other capital outlay, one fifty, zero, zero, hundred thousand this year, and you guys said that that is for a building outside of Kennedy somewhere?
Training center.
The problem I have with that is, until we take care of our own property here in town, which we need a bunch of work done on our fire department, that's why they brought up a brand new fire department, a new building. I don't know how we would even consider handing over a hundred thousand dollars to somebody else. A hundred thousand dollars, you can send every firefighter we have to TECs in Austin. You can send a firefighter to fire school once a week, that is a lot of money. I want them to have the training, but I don't know if you guys are following what I'm getting at, from what I'm looking at here, they have the money they need, and they always have had it, but it's not being consumed. I don't know how it's structured over there, but I wanna go back to five ten point zero four, which is a really big deal to me. We're still volunteer fire department, and as long as we're less than twenty people that are compensated. And I really honestly would like to see a compensated, uh, I'd like to see an administrator there, someone that is compen- that's compensated to do that. That that's their job, is run the fire department. I, I don't know if we can make that happen, but, uh, we're two twenty-six right now. And somebody has an agreement with the city that says they're turning over, how much money, three hundred plus?
It's like about two hundred and fifty.
That's what we think it's gonna be, like I said, they're a part behind.
Well, it was three hundred and thirty last year.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it's like any other department, I, I'm all for volunteer, and I appreciate the volunteers, but at some point, we have to make sure that we're providing. I mean, come on, you guys gotta have a physical, it's not right to them or their family that they're not getting physicals. If something happens to them, I mean, they have to be trained, we gotta give them what, what they need.
But can the city force them to do physicals?
Well, no, listen, the city can't do anything with them right now until we have an agreement.
Right.
But we, by law, we can't, we're not supposed to turn away all this money because we have an agreement with somebody that's giving the city this money. So we have, there's about nine hours that we have to iron out.
I know, that's, that's, that was what I, that's what I'm getting at. The fire department needs to get serious about getting the agreement done with the city. Because they can't even get their, they can't even get their nonprofit status. Without having that agreement with the city. And by having that agreement with the city, there's so many companies that would love to give them that vehicle that they're talking about. But without having that agreement, they can't do that. We need somebody at the fire department that understands and believes in the seriousness of getting that agreement done, so we can move forward with it.
Like you said, we could, like the mayor said, we can't do anything or say anything to them to make, make anything, make anything happen because we have that agreement. But we have all that equipment that belongs to the city, doesn't that make the city liable for something happens?
Yeah, the city's insured, and, and that's not really a huge concern because they're insured. My, my concerns are, we're doing so many things that we're not supposed to be doing, and we've been here over here. And we're in the same situation, I want them to have the best that they can have, but we gotta have that. Somebody has to be responsible for that department, and eighteen thousand dollars a year is not getting it. I mean, you wouldn't run a police department without a chief. You wouldn't run a city without a city administrator. I mean, that agreement is not between.
I thought we needed a fire department chief?
We do, I wanna pay, I wanna pay the administrator, the money's there. We have an agreement with somebody that nobody can produce, the city of Kennedy has an agreement with someone to protect a certain area. And we're obligated to do it. Who brought, somebody brought it up the other day, the fire department, oh, we can just walk out and leave y'all standing. They could do that to us, because they don't have an obligation, we're the ones with the obligation. I think we need to put an administrator over there that's paid, and they do what they gotta do, and they make sure their people are trained and they're as safe as they can possibly be. Somebody that we can hold their feet to the fire, the money's there. I mean, what are we gonna do when they come and say, hey, uh, wait a minute, you guys aren't doing what you're supposed to do by law?
Well, what is the fire chief doing?
I don't.
What is?
I'm saying, I, I think he's doing what every other fire chief has done. I'm saying as a responsible city, someone in the legislature, we need to provide.
A city employee.
We really do, we need an administrator, we need somebody to run the fire department. And I know other small towns have great fire departments, and they run through their numbers, and they have more time, and we don't have that. We wouldn't let a, kind of a police officer go to the school without, you know, working under the chief. I, I just, I really think it's necessary, and if you go to the building, or you get the report from her, if you spend a little bit of time with the guys, you'll understand what I'm talking about.
Well, would it hurt to perhaps find, or along with that administrator, put maybe two or three part-time or.
I, I.
Pay fire departments with them, and we're gonna have an administrator there, that way if there's a call, they're already there, way to go. So that we have the change the city targeted with that.
That would be, that would be hard.
We'll go up to twenty, or less than twenty, but I honestly think an administrator would be ideal, Brandon, and they could come, and they could analyze it, and they could, okay, this is what we turned to need to do. And then there will be no more, hey, did I show up to the fire, I know you didn't, but let me sign your name, or, hey, you didn't make the meeting, or you didn't do your training. There will be a true administrator that holds everybody accountable.
What can that administrator pick and put?
I think that administrator would be able to do whatever they chose to do, as long as they're part of that fire department. I, I mean, that's my opinion.
Too bad, dude.
Can we do that? Like, is there, is there anything preventing us, say, if we wanted to create this position, can you go in and say, okay, Kennedy volunteer fire department, we just hired a, a fire chief or an administrator, um, now you report to him, or is that a, a great agreement between the two entities?
I'll, I'll try to answer it with two, with two parts, I think you could do it, but I think the recourse could be, they say, we're out of here, we don't wanna do that. Or they could say, hey, man, that's great, because there, there's people there that they want administration there. They want somebody to come in, they're, they've got, they've got a lot of young kids over there, they're dying to go get TECs training. So to answer the question, I believe you could.
So the person wouldn't be necessarily the fire, the new fire chief, he would just need somebody to, to look at all this budget to make, and make sure that the guys are chugging in when they need to, doing all of those things, not to be over the, the chief, but to be doing what he's doing.
He would be the administrator, the chief would do whatever it is that a fire chief does, but the administrator would do, he would be the, the top of the, of the.
Of the chain, the chief, he'll, the chief will report to the minister.
I, I believe that's, you know, we've gone through it with the departments here, we've had some employees that aren't super strong, but they've never had good supervisors, and you put a supervisor with them and they just come alive.
I agree.
And, I mean, it happens every day.
It was super great, it was amazing.
Something good, and they're gonna go, they're gonna go all out, I mean, we've got a lot of volunteers there, Ronny doesn't have a lot of time to do this. I mean, sit down and go through all these numbers. He's a great guy, I like him, he, he does the very best that he can do, I think we owe it to him, I honestly believe we owe it to the fire department. And that's just my opinion.
Should we talk to him?
Well, you have to ask yourself if you're happy with what you see in the numbers, if, if you're happy with what's going on, if you, if you feel like. Well, we need that agreement from whoever's giving the city that money, cause they're writing that check every year for a reason.
Right, I, I mean, you know, a lot of.
I mean, cause it's just not, you know what I mean, somewhere in this, we're not doing what we told them we'd do for that check. If that was the case, we could just send them a bill for six hundred thousand and never pay that, but it's not right, I know where the money's coming from, it's coming from insurance companies throughout the state.
Can we look at possibly putting a position in there and play with these numbers, see what we can come up with?
She needs numbers.
Do you feel like we have the, oh, we have, we're not maxed out, I'm thinking forty thousand bucks a year, yeah?
Yeah, you have people that are like, um, safety officers that do stuff like this, this is what they do. You know, if you call the fire administrator or safety administrator or, uh, fire department administrator, I mean, this is all they do, is they're certified in safety to provide these type of agreements, to do these types of things.
Cause here's what's gonna happen pretty soon, is we're gonna put you over it, and then, no, honestly, because.
Doing that, that's what's, and I might go there and wipe the agreement, and that's what we keep telling them, please redline it back to me, please do that. Cause if not, it looks like I'm making them do what I want them to do. And that's why, and I go back over there some Monday nights, and I'm asking, so how far have we gotten? Well, we've made this change, but I've still not got any redline, anything back, and I gave it to them in a DSC version, so we could all type within it, and just leave the original stuff there until we all agree to the changes, and I just haven't gotten anything back.
I just feel like we're not gonna get any.
And I would let the engineers up there, and get everything up there, and trying to, and it's just, there's a lot going on at that fire department. You know, flood our bay, and you can walk up to it, and you can do this, and it pushes out from the inside, even though it's locked. It's so rusted out that there's nothing.
No rollers at the bottom, the whole.
I feel like we're obligated to make that fire department the best that it can be, to the people that are paying for it, to the people that the fire department's protecting, and importantly, to the fire department. That they, they.
With this.
I mean, we, we could actually do something with this fire department, I mean, that's all I do is rack my brain over that fire department, hey, what about this location? We can do this here, we can do, there's ways to do these things, that truck he's driving, he shouldn't be driving that truck, I agree with you. That truck's junk, and nobody's taking the time to sit down and say, hey, this is what we really truly need, but it's evident the numbers are here, the money has always been here. I don't, I don't.
The administrator, he would seek, he'd be able to run the finances as well, everything, would that be part of, that'd be all he's got, right?
He would, he would have to be above, he'd, he'd have to have control of everything.
The whole department.
Whole thing in order to be able.
Everything between.
Yeah, to be able to bring it to, into the level that we expect it to be.
And being that we're the size of Kennedy and the biggest town in the county, we only have four trucks. Runkie has nine, Corinth City have eight, we're only sitting here at four, I mean, we watch the people as well, I agree too.
Yeah, but I always ask myself this question too, what has James D. Sutton done to help that fire department? Nothing, I haven't done anything to help him, but this is the only opportunity I have to help, this is it. So instead of watching them and taking pictures and videoing them, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna suggest, let's give them an administrator. Let's make them happy, they'll have the best fire department they can get, we can grow. We have some of these feet that we would hold some of these feet to the fire.
And the administrator can say, you know, the fire department has X amount of dollars to do this with, right now, we have no idea what money the fire department has.
No.
And see, that's just, they don't have any, it, it's the city's, because of that agreement that we have with whoever's writing this check.
But we gave it to them, and they put it in an account.
With that, it's.
Nobody has.
That's, that's the whole deal, it's like, ugh.
You're talking about his deal, you put in the.
What's that other account rate that they have?
Fire fund.
The rural fire.
Fire.
So they don't have a fund for that?
They have their own fund that we don't keep track of.
But what is that from? That's from something else, that's no, no money from here, that's like filling the boot and.
There's no need to.
Fund donations. And that's where we get into organized crime.
Yeah, so then the paper comes a little bit, yeah.
And I, I don't, I, I can't, I can't.
Y'all can't, y'all can't, you're right, put it around here, I mean, that's, didn't come to y'all, I can't.
We have no idea.
What's that?
They know, but we, nobody can find these ones.
At some point, or any, if anybody would come to the fire department and say, hey, can we ask them a question?
There's no agreement, they don't have to, there's no agreement between the city and the fire department that says that they have to do anything at all. That's why the agreement was such an important piece, because the city has to have an agreement with that entity of how it's gonna operate. That's what they, 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 I've been, we've been talking about that, I've been here almost two years, we've been talking about it all three years, and it still hasn't happened.
I can't remember when I was up there.
July second.
Was that my?
Uh, July, July first, that was the ninth of July. And then the next one, July eighth.
And they promised me that they have something, that it's their turn, send me redlining, and, uh, we wanted to be through with it before the end of July.
That's tomorrow, tomorrow.
So we can't call a fire chief and say, hey, can we, please, what are you doing? We can't ask them?
They're not doing anything, cause they're all zero.
Well, and I'm thinking they're just always them, that way, they're just doing that way, it's not the way it is, but.
I, I feel like we go with them.
But if you look at their signature.
Work it in there, let's see what we come up with.
So if they're asking for.
Do y'all wanna, there's something that just has your, do y'all wanna throw it out? Do y'all still want?
Oh, okay. I wouldn't.
I know that they bother me when I go to the store for a bill that they don't pay, they bother you.
Yeah.
And somebody has to be on top of those things, I don't know, what, what do you mean, you want twelve hundred bucks for a hundred and eighty?
One time they called about the families, the surveillance cameras, said that if you leave it in here, they're gonna come to see their families, and I said, I think there's.
I just think we're an elective, Barbara, that's it, I'm sorry to say that, but I honestly believe.
So we can go along with the fire department, can we put forty thousand dollars in for an administrator?
I'm all for forty thousand, as long as these guys are for that.
I'm fine with forty thousand, but as far as the zeroed out items, I would leave those, just in case an administrator comes in and says, okay, my guys need physicals.
Great idea, training.
I, I'm in favor of leaving in the hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I am too, because that's a training center that everybody gets to use. You know, we're not gonna build a training center.
Yeah, we may.
I, I'm tired of you.
I'd rather, I'd rather send, like, I send you with you, I see when you say I support it. I'd rather take care of what we have here first before donating money to somebody else.
Well, here's, here's, here's my thought on that, we have been asking the fire department for an agreement for two, uh, year and a half, and we haven't got anything. So we have nobody over there that's serious about doing what needs to be done, because they don't wanna take the time to understand why it needs to be done. So we're, we've got somebody that says, we're serious about creating an environment where we can train the fire, we can have a place where they can come and get good training in the county, but we need to pay for it. And if everybody puts a little bit in, we can pay for this. We put in a hundred thousand, Corinth City put in a hundred thousand, that's two hundred thousand, Runkie's puts in fifty thousand, and, you know, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a training center that we all get it to utilize.
I might be okay with all of that if they actually had something in writing and something to present, but it's all word of mouth.
True.
There's nothing there that says we're gonna do, this, this is what, you're giving me your hundred thousand.
Right, but we hadn't given a hundred thousand either.
Hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we hadn't given them to them either, and, and we can ask for all of that.
Right, and if they.
But I don't think we should, I don't think we should trash that and say, let's put this over here for the fire department, who we can't get to understand, we need a working agreement from, to be able to do the things that we need to do for you and do it right.
Let's understand this, if you put it in there, and just say this thing doesn't come to fruition, and then Brandon has some kind of idea, y'all have a different idea, that y'all wanna do something here in Kennedy, the money's still there.
You can still use the money.
You can still use the money.
Okay, I'm, I'm, as long as, as long as she guys.
What are you saying, Brandon, you can kind of keep it up, were you saying that you were?
We just need, we need writing from now on, and that's what you just said, and I'm doing that.
That you want, you want.
As long as we get it.
I'd like to take care of Kennedy before taking. I like to take care of Kennedy before taking care of something that's gonna go in Crime City. Kennedy deserves to be taken care of, but that's our priority, it's Kennedy. I agree, Kennedy is the priority. I just think with this, this, so you have a whole piece of a pie, and this is just Kennedy, or city of Kennedy, bringing forward a piece of the pie, or all the different entities bring the pie and create a complete circle. For a facility that maybe Kennedy can't afford a half million dollar facility just for a training center, but all the different volunteer fire departments, or all the municipalities or county throwing something together for everybody to work together. But, I mean, we can put it in there, and if nothing comes from it, we still have the money.
Kennedy, and I think we're using it as an example, but Kennedy can. They can afford a five hundred thousand dollar facility.
But, and, and, and we, you're right, we, we probably can't, but should we? Is it something that our volunteer, we don't, you know...
I'm all for, yes, I'm all for working with everybody else. Uh, I guess at the end of the day, it's, it's exactly what you guys are saying, you're right. Uh, as long as they bring something in writing that says, this is what we're getting for a nickel, I'm good with it. I, I always wanna take care of Kennedy first, but I, but I will warn you, I, I am looking at a, uh, some type of new fire, fire service center for, for our guys. And I hate to say, well, we can't make a payment for a year because we gave away that hundred thousand, which I don't think that'll be the case, but, uh, that is kind of something that I'd like to work on pretty soon. So if we leave the hundred thousand in there, you have my blessing. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so now we want community development, and then we have the fire department, and we love this, forty thousand.
Do they wanna leave it in there?
Yes, they can ask, they'll do it.
Okay.
And the administrative position, everybody goes, yes.
Yes, forty thousand, basic on that.
You know what, I really don't know. It'd be forty thousand if it was a... Y'all okay by that?
Is that gonna be a new line item, or is that gonna be added to the...
It's gonna be a new line item.
No, uh, okay, sure.
So y'all all okay by it? And then someone else, someone else will come to you.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay, now we can go to community development.
The line item that I had a question about, um, the five forty point zero seven, the debris removal and structural demo, is that kind of like the example over in Cindy's district where there's the house of, I can't think of the name right now. The, I'm burning it. Is that, is that, would that line item be used for like, if the city abolished that house? Okay.
And although...
And what do we need to do so that that can be done? Because I have one in my district that has burned, and I actually have two now. Two burnt houses that nobody's living in anymore, and they're just there, you know, it's...
Now, we haven't talked to your landowners yet, Leslie. Your, your landowners, um, still might want to retain that property. We have not followed the procedure with them. So that's something that each one of these is, the whole drawn out thing. Now, um, the other one, Adolfo, and I've been going back and forth then, is, you know, the next step is location. Back on the premises, that's our first one. And so that's it. So, I have no idea. We almost thought we had that worked out, and it fell through the...
We need it with the court system on, in my opinion, and go to the max that we can go to, that, that we can go to. And before we spend a nickel tearing down people's stuff, because the city of Kennedy already owns so much property, it's unbelievable. The taxpayer will never see anything out of any of that property again.
The city of Kennedy gonna start selling all some of that property that you don't...
That's all, that's an uphold right now, and that's...
That's the world.
Brandon, yes.
That's dealing litigation?
Well, they're trying, there's a mineral life issue that we're trying to figure out, like, like, when you take property...
Can you retain minerals? And then, it's the same, we have the exact same problem at the county. It's, so you, you have these properties, and obviously you make money off the minerals, so you wanna keep them, but can you technically keep the minerals and just sell the surface?
And so by the other thing, Lindell, we actually got somebody that wants to buy quite a few of our rocks.
Yeah, I'd like to buy some myself, but, you know, everything is on hold. It's been on hold for two years.
They've even talked to John Banks a couple of times. They'll call John to see, you know, any update, any update. I think they're waiting for H U P, I believe they're waiting on a H U P.
So with that line item, that going back to the removal and structural demo, uh, it went down to fifty, but I see the projections at sixty-six.
Or negative back.
I don't think it should probably go down either, especially if we have other homes that are possibly, there might be... I don't know the right...
I don't know, but it's just, yeah, I'm fine by that. Um, unless this is when we start ending it, we'll just a little bit, we have all this stuff.
So maybe, so maybe let's just, a question mark one, if it can be worked in?
Let's see, and I, I...
Because, and now at all, honestly, you're not gonna get a home torn down. If you have a hard time getting a home torn down and removed for fifty thousand, because the house that's in my neighborhood, one of the houses in my neighborhood has a vesting siding on. So you have to, you have to, you have to do the, the bestest, and that's ten to seventeen thousand dollars in itself. Not the tear down, just the, have somebody come take the siding off and get rid of it. And then you gotta pay for the destruction of the house and have it hauled away.
Yeah, some of your landowners, though, are not wanting, and some of your landowners, we just need to use the court system and fall against them as a court, and then they'll take action on their own. They still own the property, and they're not wanting to give up the property.
Which is great, we just need to got the hours across the team.
Right, and it's, it's just, it's a lot of paperwork. But they're moving, uh, they just moved four lots with those today.
I'd rather use the court system more than spending a bunch of tax funds on owning another piece of property that we never sold.
And I can't remember which ones you told me that were right, share with you.
And every, every time they're over there doing something like that, it's just, I don't know, I couldn't tell you what they tore down last.
The Exxon.
That was in eighteen one. Plus about seven grand. Uh, does anyone else have anything on community development?
Um, do we have a community development person?
Yes.
Which is who?
We have two people over there, and you have money, you can't, two over there, and twelve me.
So the, the compliance people are community development officers?
They changed the name to community development a while back. Compliance to community development, need the exact same thing.
Because I usually, community development is someone working for growing and developing more in our community.
I can change the name back to co-compliance, I like it better too.
I think it should be co-compliance, because, you know, they're not doing anything for community development. They're doing co...
We'll change the name.
All right, I understand everybody comes to you with budgets, hey, we want this, and we need this, and we need that. When we see these zeros in here, this is another one that has a lot of zeros. I'm not saying we're taking them out, but we, we gotta reduce them. Because the last thing we wanna find out is those funds are, they're being used for other stuff.
Postage, we, we pay for their postage, right?
Yes, it comes out of their budget. They do have, they get, everybody gets their own budget for stuff like that. And now, co-compliance, there's a lot of certified letters sent out.
Yeah, but you hadn't spent anything.
It'll be transferred to the, to our, to our postage. We'll transfer it, rather than cut it out. Just like we did that other line of consulting to professional services piece, we can transfer that back into our line.
So you just, you just keep a running track of who spent postage on what, and it just don't show up in here?
No, it shows up as dough.
No, what it, what I'm saying is, so they have seven hundred and fifty, they come and they, you know, they use our machine for postage. So whenever we order, we have to purchase more postage, we'll go into that line and get some of their postage and take it out equally out of each department. Okay? We just haven't done it yet.
You still, Ash will use five thirty-one nineteen, zero.
It'll, there will be the use of it for the end of the year.
Okay.
We just haven't taken that out of there yet. We gotta divvy that between the departments.
Same idea.
But we didn't put it all in one general budget. It doesn't matter to us. Then the, the only deal is, uh, each person wants to know how much their postage is, and we can just add it out into the general. We're fine by that. It's not professional services piece. Are you okay with that?
Hey, we did reduce most of the, almost every department's budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We appreciate that. Does anyone have anything else, community development? Brandon?
No.
Leslie?
No, sir.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon? Justin?
Sir.
Okay, moving on, street department. Brandon?
Uh, yes, I had a question on... Bridge and Cold, five forty oh two, Bridge and Coldwood. Do we foresee anywhere within the city this coming year for drainage purposes that we might have to raise that at any chance? I don't know, we have a lot of drainage problems, then...
We actually have, you know, we actually have a line in big capital improvement.
We have a capital improvement?
So this is just for maintenance. This one is just for maintenance and review and capital improvement.
Yeah, if they needed to maintain something, clean it, jet it, fix it, repair it, it would be maintenance.
Well, back there in the Maytag area and all that, there's still a lot of, they tell me there's drainage. So I don't know, Coldwood...
Yeah, hit all kind of good ones, like the funnel got really bad, we kept putting...
That's another area, yes.
Uh, I think that drains it.
It's, and they're not done, but they're working on it.
Uh, most of the Maytag's been, been done. With the Coldwoods, don't you worry about that?
Yes.
And sidewalks and curbs, y'all just took that out completely?
I believe that's a capital improvement as well now.
And also with the, uh, equipment, do, all the equipment's good, the maintainer, the back goes, real facility.
Would the sweeper, sweeper fall under this as well? For maintenance and...
Another two. Equipment and vehicle maintenance.
Don't we use that street?
Yes.
It's, 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 it's a good section, issues.
They usually go early in the morning before work.
Where are they going? I've never, I don't know if they're gonna come down the street, but...
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna go down your street because it's, uh, there's not so much, it's kinda, it's dirt.
I'm trying to do your water now.
And they still, they still have a, they do it by areas. They have a, today we're doing here, tomorrow it's in here.
They mark it off as any of it. You know, I, I, uh, we had a meeting with Texa.
Yeah, wait, yeah, hold on.
Collection, also five thirty fifteen, the collection waste, uh, collection station, the waste. The collection station in general, it's only open one day a week.
Brandon, we have a problem with the collection station right now, okay? Right now, it is only open one day a week. We wanna go back to having it open on Saturdays. You know, it's more convenient for people, when the on-call people can go in there. But right now, with East Main and the shape that it's in, and when it raining, and people are trying to drag trash trailers through there, we just can't. We can't do it. Uh, we're doing the best we can to accommodate people, but with contractors down there, and the streets tore up, and it raining, there is no way that a trash trailer is gonna get down there.
It's not right to those people that live on the street.
I mean, we're trying to fix that street, and then somebody comes in and just, you know what I'm saying? And so, until we get East Main back up and going, and that street is completely finished, it's hard for us to get people down there for that service. And I know people are upset about the hours right now, Thursday through ten to twelve. But if I don't have traffic control down there, that street turns into a mess. You gotta have some type of traffic control. Are they just, the, the neighborhood is, it's, it's really bad, and it's not fair to the people that live there.
And can we look at having a better program for... Right now, um, there are, I can only find one dumpster company that will come to Kennedy. It used to be four, but I can only find one, and their, their delivery charge is three hundred dollars. Costs eleven hundred dollars to get a dumpster in Kennedy. And if you're a contractor, that's kind of discouraging for you to do business here. Because you can't, you have nowhere to take your debris. Um, none of the programs that are offered, other places are offered here. The Baxter program, you can't get it in Kennedy. Um, I've been checking on these things because it, it plays a strong role in what I do. But we, as a contractor, I can't haul trash over to the, uh, the collection station or to the one in Crime City. They won't let you anymore. County won't let a contractor bring stuff.
I know the policy behind it.
They won't. I mean, they basically told me, you know, well, let's dump this one today, but you can't, can't take construction.
I, I think the city provides a service, and I know the contractors are important, but in their eyes, it's like everything else. We're contracting, we're making, we're doing this, we're doing that. Uh, we only, we're limited. We took out sixty containers, Leslie, and brushed it, we left all of the sixty containers, but they just piled up and left there, year after year after year, and just kept adding to it. Um, for some reason, they wanna take our construction stuff. Like, if, if we have some stuff, they don't wanna take ours either. I don't know why, and, and I shouldn't say this, but I really think it all comes down to whoever does all the trash stuff thinks that, well, the contractor should be paying somebody to dump their stuff, and they jack the price up. And it doesn't make it right, but that's reality, that's what I think happens.
But you got somebody that goes to the bathroom, they can't pay a extra thousand dollars and have the trash hauled off. You got, you got two hundred dollars with the trash, it could be hauled off, you can't pay that.
I know they can't, I agree. I was just giving you an idea of what I thought happened, because this happened to me hundreds of times. And I have to go somewhere else, and it's like, whoa, how do you do it? And containers are eleven hundred now?
Thousand seventy-five dollars.
That's ridiculous. I thought we were doing good by working on something for the brush, for the people to bring their brush to us, but...
Yeah, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. I, I, I've been on the phone for two days trying to find somebody that services areas, and the one I used to use, they went out of business. They just, they left the business altogether. The other one I used, the, the closest thing they had to us closed, so now they have to bring them out and marry them, which is...
That's me.
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, it's crazy.
Our tough part here, Leslie, is there's no competition. We have one company that will all do the service that they're offering here for twice a week pickup. Everybody else that we've gotten to do it against them comes in the same price with once a week pickup. And our residents are used to twice a week pickup, so it's hard to take away that service.
I agree, I agree. It's just, it's just, it's just sad that, that we, we want to grow, we have the ability to grow, but everybody that wants to do business here, they poke our eyes out. I mean, literally poke our eyes out.
They do.
Seeing the five eighty point fourteen as well, page eleven, traffic signs, go for ten dollars and refill, but just not, when signs are, all the signs are still in good shape?
And the one right above it, the street name signs, region has been very much, still like two thousand, or was still like two thousand?
Because they're working on some of those. They're actually work, I don't know if they're actually gonna do any changes or not, because they asked me to do them a chance.
Hey, I know you got a bunch of those butts every day working on this stuff and everything that you're doing up here. And when, when I'm up here, I'm not sitting here getting on to you, I just want you to know how serious I am about it. I don't care about family working here, relatives, or any of those things. When I look at a budget, if I think it's all aligned, I'm gonna say something. So, I, I wanna make sure that seventeen thousand for, oh my goodness.
Brandon, what do you have?
Five five zero point zero three.
Five five zero, zero, so the off-road equipment?
That, so the off-road equipment maintenance, was that the maintainer?
Well, it's that thing that they write to...
Greater, yeah, maintainer. Okay, that's ten thousand there, correct? Nine thousand something? Okay, well, that's fixed.
Right.
It's been broke since how long? Two thousand eleven?
It's fixed now.
It's fixed now, okay. We just have to instill in people that we're not gonna increase our budgets. They're gonna work within their budget, and if they can't, Leslie, when I was told me, you get it done at forty dollars, or I get somebody can.
That's right.
So we're gonna work within the budgets.
And they're all good at doing that.
I, most of them are.
And you'll see, you'll see where our, where our Jan is, and we, and we're gonna cut it, that's without a doubt. But we just wanted to see, we wanted to show you... But we just wanted to see, we wanted to show you what we get in budget numbers for capital outlay and stuff, because that's gonna shock y'all. Now, we're gonna change it. And we're gonna get back within budget, but I just wanna show you how much we have to shave off of everything that the mandates are put on us. And we're gonna change it, I promise. I don't, I don't mind trouble.
And I'll back off a little bit. I just, I wanna do a little bit better job than I did last year, that's all.
Do you see where we took decorations out of the street department for twenty-five hundred dollars? That's the one we do. That's the same one, it's the same, uh, Ms. O'Beam and Johnson.
Got you. Okay, does anybody have anything else? Brandon, did you say anything about streets?
No, I'm talking about the traffic signs. The ten thousand dropped down to three thousand, but I was asking about the street sign.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Leslie? Cindy?
And do you have a question about, uh, are we still utilizing the waste stations to pick up our brush?
Yes.
Do they still pick it up once?
You know what? And what people don't understand, if you, if you don't call in, turn in on their brush list, even though they can physically see your brush, they-
They draw a right back.
Because the way they do it is kinda crazy. They, they bring a container or two and they drop it off. And they fill the one up that's on the truck, they go to the yard, they take it off of there. They leave the container on the truck. They take it out of the, the brush, out of the container and put it on the one on the ground. Now, if they would've known that they had thirty instead of fifteen, they would've brought two containers. And then when they have a broken truck and it's down for a month and they don't come over here, that makes it hard too.
Yeah, and that's always been an issue.
That's crazy, right?
That's always been an issue, but it's not being able to uncompletely put the brush in like that.
So, we do a lot of it ourselves.
There's, and there's times that they'll say that the high line's in the way.
What do we, what do we pay them? Is that included in the garnish?
There's a, there's, but we have large arguments we have about that. And when we, when we really get on them, they'll start coming down here, you know, like, timely. But then they'll do stuff like that, oh, well, if that was near a high line, I could pick that up because the, the, yeah, wrap around it or whatever. And so, we've had people call in and put stuff on the brush list, and we go over there, rack it out and take it because it's just not fair to them. And then you have people that see other people put their brush curbside. So, everybody goes to the curbside, but they don't call in. They won't stop at an address that's not called in. And we've talked to them about that numerous times. If you see brush, pick it up. If you see brush, pick it up. They just won't be for the model brush list. It, it, that's a function of that all. I just can't find anybody else to make the service.
Can I have a question? Brandon? Justin?
Emergency management.
This is just for emergencies. This is just a planned emergency for emergencies of the life.
Now, you assume, when the county went down, we could run the whole command center out there. But the county came out with their equipment and we don't have it anymore, so the chief goes to all the county L A P C and, and emergency management training. Airport. They're, they're on that whole phase two. They're doing a lot of things. Y'all did a lot of things at the airport. With the taxiway and A W O S, and they're in phase two now, so they're not, they're not, uh, phase two's gonna take a while. It's gonna take a while to finish that taxiway and put it in. It's a brand new taxiway. Almost got a brand new airport out there. And it's must've been brand funded, so it's been good there. They don't have a big budget. They have an eighty-one, three-twenty this year. And their money, remember, comes from their oil, because they can only use their oil for them. So, they kinda stay in good shape because they live in the right place. They just live on top of their own land. Library, no, so, did y'all get change, uh, questions about the airport? Library, um, we just put them in a new A C M heating system. Um, so they're doing pretty good.
You don't have a person that you pay for the library? Or is that under something here?
They come to the county. That's the county fund. There's like, each municipality has their own library.
In the county station?
Yes, sir. Parks department? Wait, the reason you highlighted yellow, ten, five, ten, oh one, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen there. Um, the sports complex, we're gonna have to hire, uh, somebody to market that thing. I don't know how many years of marketing experience you wanna want. I don't know what we're gonna want there. I think to be advertised and see folks and see what their resume and their applications look like. Um, we left that open at a maximum of sixty thousand dollars. I mean, that's a lot of weekend work, and, and we're gonna want somebody to come with a marketing degree or a business degree to come in and help you do that.
I would've said forty to sixty.
Yes. You know, just depending on how much experience they have or whatever. We also have an, um, it's a total of eight, eight, eight part-time employees. And the part-time employees, if you'll look what those were, those are gonna be, you're gonna have, uh, two part-time cooks, two, four concession workers and two gate workers. You have a total of nine staff. And this is our projection, a estimation of what we think that could happen. It could become more. These are uncharted waters for us. We really don't, we're taking a risk, yes, a estimation.
And those employees, do they get benefits?
You're gonna start out as part-time, and remember, see, since the, the complex isn't gonna be ready until January, the only person that we're probably gonna have employed is the sports complex manager, so then. We did, we did have twelve four eighty in there for each employee at twelve dollars an hour. But if something does occur, where they're working a Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday game, that's going to become a full-time position. And I will have to come out and let you know that. I have to see how well we market it first.
So, there's a marketing person and a complex manager?
No, no, just one.
Okay.
And there, there's nine total. We have a sports complex manager, then we have a, uh, uh, two part-time cooks, four part-time concession workers and two part-time gate employees. And that's to have one cook and two concession workers and one gate worker per ship. So, it's four and four, broke up into two ships. And if that doesn't work, I'm gonna come out to you and tell you it didn't work. But unless y'all have a better idea, that's a good start. It's a starting point for us. You all okay by that? And all that becomes parks now. All of that is gonna be the park department. So, you'll have the other, um, David and Jimmy will be adding to that. We have one park position right now. We do not have bill because there's no reason to have a person out there when we have no maintenance. The bills are being torn down. As soon as we get, I mean, Jimmy and, uh, David can do everything out there right now.
Parks and Recreation, can we change the name to that? Because we are offering, we'll try to be like other cities. We're gonna offer recreation.
Y'all want to go Parks and Rec?
Hey, can we get a recess? No? All right, well, I'm gonna go anyway.
Y'all want a recess right now? I think I'll help you, that's yours.
Pardon me, Michelle.
Oh, I love you. I think you're pretty good, and it's the same girl's.
So, we did my son's cake smash this weekend, right?
Oh, let's see.
And so, he was, this was, so this was him, like, at the window, "Aww, how cute." And then he, he did so good, right?
Oh, yeah.
And then this happened.
Oh, that's so cute.
And then he was so mad, and what happened was I stuck his hand in the cake, because he didn't wanna touch it. I was like, yeah, well, you're gonna smash this cake. So, I put his hand in the cake, and he got mad. He saw blue on his hand, and he didn't like it. And then this is what, I'm sorry.
Oh, I get so mad. Poor baby.
He was, he was so pissed off. And then we, we went to this, it was in Austin. It was in this, have you ever been to State General Park? It's like, so beautiful.
Wow.
And so, so that was another picture.
Aw, she's so cute.
She is.
So cute.
Thank you. And he turns one on, um, party one is-
Yeah, my sister, she, my nephew is, he's up two and a half now, and, um, his first birthday party, she went all out. Like, the photography session, like, got the high cheer with like, with the garland, with all the ribbon and everything. I mean, she went all out. Second birthday came around, she was like, going over the house.
We're already on dogs.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened. So, it was so funny.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna say, like, for a second, for ages, for me, it was so cool, but for, for her, it's like this. Boss, boss Howard, Austin report.
Can you hear okay, okay?
Huge, and so, we made that for-
You're gonna look at it next year and go, man, what was I thinking? That's been all this money.
Yeah, he didn't want to, because I literally put up my, went like that.
Seventy-two minutes.
It was so, oh, he cried so much, but my sister was laughing so hard, so.
That's good.
Well, that's what I was gonna, I was gonna say.
This thing comes so handy.
So upset, and so proud.
You're not good.
Smiling anymore, so it was over.
Just don't want to, that's what this is all about. You just wanna make it so awkward and uncomfortable for you. They say they do, but the reality is- What we need to do is maybe search you later petition. I can give it to my councilman.
Yeah, we had to be able to afford workers, some had inspired.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
See, when they first get the, 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 it's long, but the windows are packed with, in one body, not as, it can be blown.
I thought it'd be probably so tight. I gotta hit it.
And then you're like, okay.
I can't.
Right.
But it's, you can tell, you get-
Cars shouldn't take too long.
It's personal.
Yeah, I don't know, rumors won't take them in.
Sure. Yes, it is the order.
I'm gonna say it for a fact.
Because there's, there's time. There's time, you don't wanna be driven.
Not obstruct traffic or cause the traffic to be non-impeded, but you're completely ignoring that part of the sentence. Focus on the quarters of your position at the back of the meeting room.
Yeah.
Along the aisle. The situation is to obstruct traffic, not to obstruct traffic. And if we're over here against the wall, we're not obstructing traffic. So, it's just misinterpreted, or it does, so very quickly, on the situation.
Exactly.
You know, you don't, you know your refrigerator doesn't have a handle.
We usually don't do public comments.
I can figure it out.
You was looking for something tonight?
I was. I'm gonna be on this, y'all.
Isn't that just another misinterpretation? It's gonna be ruled. Public comment. Public means everyone. Not just the Canadian public, not just the Canadian public. It means everyone, anyone who has an interest in the city of Canada. Even if you don't have an interest in the city, your general public means general public. It's very clearly defined.
We have the last one, last one to eat in here.
So, we have the one today, and then we have another one at the next time.
We're getting a lot of comments. I keep seeing that move.
Is it?
I'm gonna try to process the sound, so this is clear as-
Oh, I got two?
Okay, carry on, Barbara.
You're in this report. Do you have any questions here?
What we have, this report?
Y'all could use a P.
Yeah.
You, you ready to go? Utility revenues? Brandon?
Yes, the yellow three sixteen point zero zero transfer from utility surplus fund.
That's what I told you that I would, but I'm gonna explain to y'all. The reason that is in there, okay?
Okay.
Because we're gonna have to be paying, and this gets kinda complicated, but just follow along, okay? We're gonna have to be paying for the R O T done, for the transmission line to be done, and then having the bond payment coming in. Will we have bond payments this year? I don't know. I don't know where we're gonna be on the transmission calls, and I don't know where we're gonna be on the parcels. We're gonna have to buy those. I add an extra five hundred thousand dollars cushion in there, in case they have to do a reimbursement resolution, and when we start that project and buy those parcels. And we're a step ahead of ourselves. So, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves. The money started coming in more at once. Where we were, if the sports complex, if they had it in through in January, you could have bonded it one time. And you know, we're waiting on, waiting on a reimbursement resolution. I think come October first, we're gonna have to do that reimbursement resolution and start bonding. So, I don't know what that puts that first payment date scheduled at. It's gonna be close to the five hundred thousand dollar mark. This is gonna be an expensive project. So, I'm asking to leave a cushion in there for this year for this transfer fees, where you're gonna have your professional services, your parcels and everything else. I'm not sure how it's going to play out, just because, again, it's uncharted waters. I don't know exactly how much the line's gonna cost. We don't have these figures. We have nothing solid. Um, I mean, we could leave it in. I mean, we could take this out and amend it, emergency unforeseen, but since we know it's gonna happen, I really don't think that's a good idea. I don't think we look like we're doing due diligence there, because we know that these costs are gonna come in at a higher rate.
That sounds good to me. What do you guys think?
We're close on our land parcels? Very close. I'm hoping to be coming to you before the end of the budget for purchase.
Awesome. Interesting. I knew it. Did you have anything else, Brandon?
Well, I was looking at T D C and Ashton. They still, um, we haven't had any complaints from T D C Jake about anything with water or sewage and nothing like that. Ashton either?
Ashton at first.
That's what I was gonna do. It's still, it'll heat it up or calm it down now, leaving things alone.
When, um, Isaac's here, but when he came with Mia and, and, oh, help me, John, and who else?
Joel.
Joel. And I mean, we know that the numbers have increased, but they're, what they have to be in order for us to produce and supply that water. And we can, we can say that the cost is not, but it is. It, it, it's very expensive to make water in Kennedy. Because as you see, as the wells are down right now, well fifteen requires more. It requires more of the scrubbing of the water. It could be good quality, but horrible quantity. Sixteen, good, better quantity, but not as good as quality. When we go with our transmission line, as far as we're going, that's gonna be very expensive as well. These are incurred costs that we're gonna have to pay. They're gonna help us in the long run, you know, um, we know we wanna be in the Russo because that's where the good water is, and we know that we're, we're everybody involved for us- We know we wanna be in the creoso because that's where the good water is. And we know that everybody involved for us to be in the creoso. And so we have, we're in those charter territories now, and we have to keep going. We can't back down and pull out all the projects. And that's the only we're gonna be able to pay for is to pass the cost law.
Three fifty six point oh one earned, interest earned and dividends miscellaneous. Miscellaneous revenues. What exactly is miscellaneous revenues?
Those aren't just small miscellaneous revenues that just come in, and we never know what they're gonna be. Like if they, um, sell like scrap metal. Fifty dollars, sixty dollars. Sometimes they get a big load, sometimes they take a medium sized load.
Would you like some mushroom? Not anymore, Barbara. It cost us too much. We lose. Anything else, Brandon?
No, good.
Leslie?
No.
Cindy? Brenda?
Okay.
Justin?
Okay, I do, Barbara.
Okay.
Three fifty two zero six. I understand this, I believe, but I'd like for them to understand it.
Ah.
Three fifty two zero six, cause that's eighty one thou, uh, fifty four thousand dollars that we won't be taking anymore.
Okay, this is a liquid waste disposal cell. What we were doing is we were taking waste from other places and having it come to our sewer system. And the permit to be able to do that is very expensive. And our permit was expiring, and Chris brought me the permit. If you would see where these things are coming from, it just can't be that good a bill because people were coming from Corpus to bring us the good waste. We have no idea what we were putting in that sewer plant. I did not wanna deal with paying a high price permit in T C Q. I mean, that's the unknown. We don't know what somebody else is putting in our sewer plant. We know what we're putting in our sewer plant. Ashton tells us what they're putting in our sewer plant. These are just tractors coming in and dumping.
Why can't they do it in their own city?
And they build it out two or three hundred miles from all the way to Kennedy, Texas to dump this waste. And now that the permit was due, the permit is like a hundred thousand dollars. It was just, it was crazy permit. That's what isn't worth it to us to take this. What are we taking? We don't know what's in that truck.
We didn't do the permit yet.
I did not wanna renew the permit, and I don't wanna take this waste from other people.
Sounds good to me. A hundred thousand dollars for a permit. We're gonna make it. We lose nineteen thousand dollars, Brandon.
Yep.
That is just, I don't know. I mean, if, if that stuff was not bad, they would've dumped it close to the home.
That was what I'm saying. Why are you gonna come all the way to here and keep dumping your own city? We don't have a roof for it either.
We don't, we don't. We need to take care of our people first. And that's why our capacity down at the sewer sum.
Okay, well, waste water treatment plan. Brandon?
Where do we stand with the waste water treatment plan? Perhaps maybe needing to upgrade or building a new one in the near future.
Yeah, that's gonna happen too, but right now we're trying to ensure a rerate on it. If we can get a rerate, we're good. That we're not at the seventy five percent. Now that we have the mixers and everything that's up running and the clarifiers, and we have the construction going on, the, the facility's running at a better capacity. We're gonna try and do that and get that rerate and keep it going a few more years. If we can keep it going a few more years. You know, once that creoso water starts coming in, you're gonna have more sewer coming in too. These will all be future problems, so let's not bite those off tonight.
Yeah, this is my opinion. Three years, you're gonna be looking at a new sewer plant. Is that close?
Oh. But they're very expensive.
Outrageous. We need one of them. We have one now, but it's.
The contracted services by thirty point one three, what is that exactly?
For elegant sixty one or sixty two?
Sixty one.
The contracted services is all of our software, tower technology, which is the, uh, vacuumated cash collection and storage system. Uh, the receipt, kind of cash for antivirus, and then we put ten thousand dollars in there for R T C services. And then, um, we're twenty five thousand for other services, which includes pest control.
And then sixty, six two zero point zero six on the next page, professional services, that would be handsome.
That's what we would give using a paper.
So we're projecting.
That's a big bill.
Eight hundred thousand, and we're only quitting five hundred thousand in the budget.
But we got a lot to do.
So we don't think that was much of a deal.
And if we, if, if we, if we do add another five hundred thousand, we've always got some. Right. And we're moving to, you know, once it's bonded, and you're making payment, you don't have all those cost of funds. So we're moving, we've incurred a large part, I mean, we're hoping. Because once we get to this other part, it's gonna be like a phase one, phase two, like those transmission lines, start the water, do whatever. And then we get to bonded, and we won't have all those upfront costs.
I see six twenty point oh eight, the last one, Canadian C F B, twenty five thousand, two thousand hundred what?
If you go into the general revenue, you'll see, I believe, it's three oh eight oh seven. That's what I've been.
Jim already?
That's our very first page, page one. Brandon, the twenty five thousand, the city always gives you on top of the emergency service district, you place in that.
Okay.
That's the emergency stores.
Right.
Yes, sir. That's at twenty five thousand.
Might have been at the debt service one.
Maybe the years are longer too, from the bonds. Brenda, did you have anything?
Mm-mm.
Justin, anything else?
Nothing else.
Is there anything else? Is everybody okay with that?
The building going up up here? Which building? The sewer, uh, the water, all the buildings, I see buildings five forty oh one, five thousand. And we only spent five fifty five, so we're dropping it down to twenty five hundred.
This is the sewer five, five forty oh one?
Yes.
That's maintenance.
That's maintenance.
So that's like, um.
New room or something like that?
Maybe kind of work ends to be done at the building.
Does have anything else?
Yeah.
In that department. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're moving on to reverse osmosis.
Okay, there's a, let's do waste water treatment plan. Let's do sixty two.
Yeah, we're just talking about that.
No water.
Okay, waste water treatment. So on the waste water treatment, you have office supply thirty five hundred, spent four hundred eighty six dollars, took it down to five hundred. Is that another one where that's all coming from here and?
Yeah.
Being divided?
Yeah, we just brought it down to, they really haven't used, they only use four eighty six, so we brought it down to five hundred.
And they were fine by that, yes.
They buy supplies just like once a year?
They have a fair amount of supplies.
Maybe quarterly, middle guys.
They have a lot of loud expenses and stuff like that up there, but not a lot of. Yeah, it's more of a technical.
Five twenty oh four, building uniform. Is that included, they pick them up and rid of them?
Yeah, there's three of them out there, and it's about fifteen per person.
See electricity went down on.
What they can go deep and stuff, uh, Apple building, and we don't have to turn on all, every one of the, actually, we should place that on the state, so like.
We would put in an efficient air conditioning system in the laboratory also.
Right, is that, that was just a brick filling with that air conditioner.
Oh, note for later, F C number four, super noisy, right outside here. It's noisier than it was last year. It's twelve years old. F C number four, yes, F C number four. Brandon, you got anything on that?
Five thirty seventeen, they. Solid waste collection service. I see we're going up ten thousand dollars from seventy five that we really have set.
The projections setting.
projections. Leslie, you got anything on that?
Yeah.
Cindy? Brenda? Justin?
No, sorry.
Did you have anything else, Brandon?
No, good.
Office supply, same thing, these guys will nail. And these guys don't provide like that.
Gotcha. Reverse osmosis. Brandon? I'm going to the reverse osmosis, but we have to keep when we get to the works.
No, no.
They roll away completely.
Yes, sir. That's what's so costly, like ninety point six million bucks a year.
Like, are we?
Two point two.
Are we gonna keep it operating or, um? Like, are we gonna?
As a backup.
Are, are those wells?
Well, going down and out of use. You know, and eventually everything, how do you start plugging or doing something? You know, and, and over to those wells, some of those wells, they don't do as, as well as they used to.
So we should be pretty sufficient for osmosis out, just completely.
That's our whole purpose there.
What's the max capacity of reverse osmosis that we're running at right now?
They don't have a report in front of me. It's gonna be on their monthly report, it'll be that a quarter. And you'll be two months for us. So we'll be able to compare two of your summer months and see what happened. And remember, you had one, two put down, one to lay, it was much, much easier. That's the capacity, you'll come from reports for like the.
Leslie, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Cindy? Brenda? Justin?
The only other question I have was five fifty point zero nine, um, it's fully infrastructure me, and it's highlighted other. And it went from two hundred thousand to twenty five thousand, which is good. Um, what is, what is that item for?
Just any other rate that he said they.
Might appear out there.
You can remember, uh, just in his comments, it was looking out there.
Right.
We did about for bits, so I think. So I mean, you can be good, we're not satisfied with something.
Great.
And we did not have. We'll talk about that later.
That's the index fully.
Everybody's good with this? Okay. Brandon? Do you have anything?
No. I was gonna list the total miscellaneous, we go down to five forty point oh four, water, sewer, right, we're going to zero, ever a hundred thousand. Those were the lines that were laid.
That's like for their coupling and things they need for, I guess, do like an inventory. That's what that is for. It's for like maintenance.
Which item was that, Brandon? Uh, item five forty point oh four, the total miscellaneous. Well, we're gonna focus on sewer. We, we spent a lot of time on water. We're gonna continue with some of the water. But, um, we really got a chunk on some of the sewer. We discovered some of this, most of this, it's not good. And that's for fittings, you said?
That's like for everything, um, that apartment needs to maintain on.
Sand, gravel, bays.
Maintenance.
Mm-hmm, got it.
Then we go to five. Five thirty thirteen contracted services goes up five hundred dollars, but it's projected to go that direction anyways. What contracted services would we be possibly looking at?
They, it's pest control, I T services. Anything they have contracts for? Is there basic maintenance of their building that it costs down?
I do have a question on the very next page, line item six twenty point zero. Is that for the C V B grant that Al was working with?
Uh, Anna, uh, Anna Panson is getting that.
Okay, okay, so it's not a project.
No.
Just an, an update on.
I know where we go.
Okay. Did you hear about Rungy? Rungy got the funds.
No, I, I don't know. I hope we're just telling part of that.
Okay, okay, I just wanted. There, there was a, there was a county grant, there was a hurricane Harvey grant that the county got. And, um, there were different asks and wants from the different cities, but it was granted to Rungy to rebuild one of the bridges. So I didn't know at that.
No.
Reading that, that was funds to match it to complete out that project. Cause it was like a sewer admission, like, wasn't it? Okay, okay, just make sure.
I know.
Man, Alders, Brian, on, on five eighty eleven, the start of the transit. You could have the money to purchase them this year.
You will have all you need next year, ready for you to go.
That's right. I'll, I'll have them, you know, spend that, we'll, 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 and so we'll have to use things ready to go, available for charge versus sitting here waiting for three months for everything.
Good job.
Thanks, Mr..
Five eighty sixteen, water.
Water years.
I see that we go down twenty.
Same thing.
Yes, sir. Get a lot of hot.
Okay, does anybody else have anything on there?
No, uh, Justin, you're paving, you're paving, maybe you have your pitch one seven on the paving fund.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I, is that on Capitol Alley or is that this next page?
We have a paving fund. I'll give you, I'll give you the paving fund. Um, I, we probably need to do the office one, to, to what it looks like.
For what street?
Pull in.
I brought it to our attention, um, we were talking one day, and I brought up possibly paving Pullman Street over, which is in my district, by Mr. Giamire. With Escanito Creek, once it's completed, there's gonna be a lot of traffic going through there. But with text dot, text dot would only allow us to, or allow for an entrance off of one eighty one, and you have to exit Pullman. They wouldn't let in, in, out traffic off of one eighty one. So with all that increased traffic, I feel like we really should paint it. Cause it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna get tore up quick. And that, that's just how I feel. Y'all wanna take a vote on it to make that decision together.
No, good, dude. All the traffic starts going up there, it's gonna get eaten up real quick.
And right now, it's not. It's, it's not, it has like a material on top, but it's not tech, but it's not.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't actually pave, it wouldn't actually dug out and the base put in and. Or should be done, somebody just put some laptop on it and packed it down, and the grass is coming up on it, and the dirt's coming up on it.
So if you are okay with that, that's what she was saying.
Third street needs to be paved. LaRaca street needs to be paved. People still living on their roads, so we're gonna get numbers on pavement, we're gonna do that now, but just remember, no matter what street it is, water, sewer, and gas comes before that.
Okay, moving on along. Yeah, that's the, that's the completion of the, of the. Page twenty nine is already collected off of floors. And what we do in this, this account is we take, we take everything less the, was it fifteen hundred, the, the minimum? And we do the reimbursement to loss fullness to Silverback Commons, kind of silver pill. So that's what y'all see, that's what that budget's for. That's our proposal, we'll end up paying.
I think there's any more, I can.
They completed, they've sold. They've completed, they've sold the first ten, and they're looking, I think, at building another set of five to ten rooms.
They replied some of them. That's for that money, yeah.
That's good. There's, the homes are being sold, um, all over town, I'm trying to get the closing done. They had six closings that day, so mine can get done, but...
What type gonna be used?
Uh, corn's landing type.
Page thirty's district debt service, it just shows you what we're paying on our bonds, the series, principal interest in total.
We say we have two more hotels, we want to come in and we want to deal with.
We have a lot of people on the list, so you got a couple of apartment complexes, a couple of rentals. Um, I mean, we have people banging on the door, it's just that we don't have, we cannot, we cannot produce any water. I mean, our wells are at max capacity, or, you know, we just are where we are.
Okay, Brandon, any questions?
Hotel Motel. The... I see we have the Chamber of Commerce at zero, but then we have one ten match that we would have, there's no...
Chamber of Commerce going on the agreement with...
Yeah, so I get that agreement.
I sent you guys an email today, we did get an update from the Attorney General in regard to our request. The Attorney General replied to the chamber, asking them to, um, let us know about, I mean, asking the chamber if it's, they would re-release or whatever, please re-release it to us. So we'll see what the chamber's answers to us, and we can't get an agreement until we get all that, if we can iron out all the agreements, we're good.
The Center for Professional Services. About the four hundred and fifty thousand? Stay about that.
It's like the designing of the, the, of the community services. Now, we have, and you know, this gets kind of confusing here, because we have some plans, we have a couple of these plans. Um, I think Special Projects is looking at those to see what we can incorporate and stuff. You know, I mean, we have a lot of good ideas in the box. And it all depends on what Special Projects plan to say is on, if these plans are good or this, because we have a lot of stuff ready, do you know anything? We just never forget our triangles and our square for.
Hey, this is my top one, but, uh, did you get estimates?
I got estimates, carry on.
What was the best bid?
Best bid, um, oh, absolutely, right, you weren't even there, I was. Uh, we had American Basin, and really cheap, it wasn't, I mean, those, very cheap. I mean, they're, they range from like three hundred thousand to less than a hundred thousand dollars, they were the obvious best bid.
Awesome, okay.
And it's American Basin, and it's, it's, it's just like everything else, I don't know when all is gonna be done, but I did get a, I'll send you all that. I don't remember the building name, can you answer that?
I don't need...
Maybe Louis Schreier? No, I don't know. Louis is back, yes, very constant.
Great, I'll need stuff.
So, that should be on the August thirteenth, I think, but...
Okay, Brandon, you have anything else?
What about the, zero staying the same for the mild, you have a vessel? Brandon, what, what, did you ask her to stay the same as shit?
Well, I'm having a great idea of moving it up, and I, and I'm just a miser sometimes, so please take it down, reduce that. So apparently she did that. But that's up to you guys.
Is there ever gonna be a detailed report as far as the last payment expenses?
We can give you every contract, you don't need...
Well, I mean, I've looked at that, but there should really be a detailed report for every...
General.
The report I sent you, how, how much more detailed do you want it to be, like, how much we spent on advertising, how much we spent on music, how much...
I would like to see it actually broken down into...
You wanna see?
For entertainer.
For entertainer.
The advertising, you know, it should be a really detailed report, not like for other, cause I know, I get that all the time.
I do too, and I would appreciate that as well.
Hey, just, I don't know how you're gonna protect some of the contracts where we can't share specifics on some of those artists.
I don't, I don't think Cindy's necessarily asking for the contract, but if...
Do you just want the numbers, or you want the paperwork, I bet, I bet.
What I would like to know is where, who we pay, how much we pay for what.
Well, that's artists, I mean, if you, some of the artists, our contract says that we can't divulge what they were paid, and that's normal practice in the advertising, entertainment industry.
And if you, if they, um, say, no, you know what, then you can't do it, but I think we have to have some kind of detailed report.
Well, as a, as a governmental entity, I, I think you can release the, you know, the price. Maybe not, okay, well, these are our special requests, we want a twelve pack of Bud Light, we want vegan meals, we want whatever the case might be. That might not, that might not be releasable, but the dollar amount, us being a governmental entity, we should be able to disclose, okay, Justin Meyer played his guitar for five hundred dollars.
Yeah. We'd be all...
Just, just to...
That's what I'm saying, we don't have that report, huh?
We, we have that summary report where it's in.
How much we paid for all our entertainers, how much we paid for the restrooms, how much we paid for advertising. But I didn't put who we paid for advertising, for example, like, we paid for the BBC on, for the radio stations, we paid them, I didn't put any news centers for advertising. How much of the trash, um, security, how much I didn't put each officer's name, that would be...
One, one of the things that we can know is we do not pay for any of them, we don't pay as a government, we do not pay off.
Right.
So even if it says so in the contract, we don't do that.
Oh, I know we don't.
Yeah.
I was just making that up.
Specifics.
Y'all look at the text, actually, we can go quick.
We will, but, um, okay, so what are we doing here? Hotel Motel. Is there anything else? Did you have any? Justin, anything else? Leslie?
No, sir.
Did you get your question done? Cindy? Brandon?
I'm here.
Well, how, how soon can we have that report? How long will it take you to...
I'm just gonna buy it by the next counseling.
Hey, you can, we can release any information to you that you want, it's just, you gotta understand that when you use this information, some of it you're gonna get for legislative purposes. So, the, you gotta keep it, you can't, you can't share it, if that makes sense. That report she's gonna turn loose, she can turn it loose to the public, okay, cause it's public, you can use that information. But if, if you received it and it wasn't going to the public, just because you're legislature, you can get anything you want.
No, I know, and I, I did go in and look at the stuff, but I didn't see, you know, I didn't see a cardinal, anything about cardinal, uh, fears, no, no, I know, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, we're gonna be dating on fears, so...
And that's fine, but, I, you know, I just, I think that the public deserves to know exactly where that money went down from.
We do too, that's why we got side with the chamber. Because we're asking, we ask them for the same thing you're asking yourself for.
Well, they should do the same thing tomorrow, but I'd certainly, at some point, like, see if it's back to the chamber.
That's up to the chamber.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
Totally.
Okay, anything else on Motel Motel?
We should be able to start together.
So I agree, but still, if everybody has to understand that we didn't run the chamber off, the chamber decided, which they had every right to, not to put, agree on a contract with the city. The chamber, the chamber has to do that.
And I understand that. Okay, can we look at this city of Kennedy really quick?
Yes. Yes.
Um, cause these are things that y'all brought up, and these are things that we're looking for, for budgeting purposes. To assist with the traffic speed in Kennedy specifically in our downtown area, TechStop is gonna do a speed study. Um, crosswalks, the second and main are faded, need help, TechStop will be, uh, uh, they're gonna do striding, and they're gonna check, uh, second and fifth. And they're replacing those flashing lights, I don't know if y'all noticed it, at six points, they replaced those two, they went around to every one in the city of Kennedy, every crosswalk can do all replacements. Um, they provide us with a city, a full excuse copy of the municipal use, uh, use agreement, and, but, that, that's for, uh, Jordan, Escanito Creek Parkway. And it says Escanito Creek Parkway project, we just wanna make sure that the city, TechStop and Sarah all coordinate for traffic control, and I'll send Chris some emails on that. Uh, mowing cleaning is the city's responsibility, this is discussing at date the current municipal maintenance agreement. The last one was signed by, um, women Franklin, and I believe it was signed in nineteen eighty. And so they're telling me that the new one's not gonna change a lot, but, like, some of the city's responsibilities, and we always find out crosswords about this, is anything that's in the city limits, regardless of whether it's TechStop, it's our responsibility if we go for it.
Amen.
Even wideaways, even the little islands out there by Walmart, all that stuff is the city's responsibility, it's not TechStop's, it's in the city limits. You know, we, we have no...
Well, they, what they used to do, they went to this, to the individual businesses and asked them to maintain those areas. Like, they came out, went and asked us to keep the grass, but we went to Wells Fargo and asked them to keep the grass, but, and most of the businesses do that.
And then they asked us, um, to, uh, like, stuff that's, stuff that's encroaching on their eastments, they wanted outside, stuff, dirty, like, the cigarette signs, if they clunk in the ground, that's, we're supposed to be mowing in front of Walmart, all the places that are highway eastment, and they're telling us, we can take those out of the ground, we can get those, cause it's encroaching in our eastment. Anything we have to mow, we can take all these other places out of. They're looking at signs for, uh, to revamp further out the truck route, because I was talking about the cost of those signs, they're helping us look at that. And anything about discussing state highway closures, for city events, anything less than four hours, they're getting it formed for. Um, other than that, when due to events that we close before a little bit longer, then the city's responsible. And if you can't read my chicken scratch, I did the best I could to write as soon as possible. And, uh, so, keep in mind, we made this budget, we do not have, and this is something that came up to us, and I'm not sure how we're gonna go about this, we don't have the equipment, um, pulling the, those big mowers to do all the defense. And this is something that we're looking at, I'm not sure how that's gonna go, I don't know if we can have it up. Or if we will have to take out a surplus to get the purchasing, for these gentlemen to be able to mow, the places that we're gonna have to mow. And it just needs to be thought, things like that.
What, what do you need to sort of time?
All was out on one eighty-one.
And seventy-two?
And seventy-two. Anything that's where it says City of Kennedy, and you kind of like that, and all the east, the eastments and stuff in front of Walmart, in front of like the Southern End and Sweet, all that grass right there, we're responsible.
Like I said, the business has been cutting it so far.
So, and, and you know what, we can keep playing it out, Leslie, I think it's looking good, but the cost of some of these lawn mowers are ridiculous. It's like buying a house. You just can't live it. That's all I have, I just want y'all to know that we are responsible for that, so if something does come up, or you see something like that, at least what it is.
Thanks.
Anything that you have any more questions for us? Anything else you wanna see in the budget, anything you want to put in out of the budget? On the, uh, Capitol Alley, we will raise your app, we're just telling you what the bids came in at. We'll get that down to where it needs to be, a little way for that, and we'll go to CQ priority, okay?
I don't know.
No, it's blank, Barbara.
If you printed it out, I would think it was... I was like, what is that?
Hey, I'm, I'm looking for something in here, Barbara, one second. It's on salaries. I think you explained it to me, but I wanna make sure, I don't want this to come back and eat us up later on down the road. I'll go through mine next time. It's gonna be in the streets department. Are you sure? Okay, well, I'm wanting a wideaway for me, then if you're, I know what I'm saying. Oh. Did you say, uh-huh?
It, it comes down more to, um, sometimes these guys come up with position titles, I don't always think they're the best things, but they, what they come down to. We have a foreman making more than a lead foreman, though we have a foreman that has been with the city for twenty-odd something years and receives longevity...
Ten years? No, he's even, that's a lot.
Ten years.
Well, I gave the wrong person. Yeah, 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 never mind. We gave the, he makes more because he's been here, he's received an increase, so the other person just moved into the position and had me complete his muscle probation. And we really don't know exactly what that position should be. And if more of an administrative foreman, then it would be the lead foreman, cause they do more of the administrative duty to the foreman. Because they are administrative, they said lead instead of administrative.
So we have to push, so we have somebody in the street department doing administrative?
We have, we have somebody doing, it's administrative and, uh, doing some of the computer work and doing some of the other stuff for us. And we have two people that do it.
The department did, not the...
No, we have two people that are doing a lot of the stuff in there, there's more than one person can handle, there used to be almost three positions, right, I have two people now.
This is what happened. We have somebody that had a position, and no longer has that position, but is still receiving the same wage. I don't understand how that works. And I, I just want a better understanding, how does it work if Amanda and Barbara switch jobs, Barbara's not keeping her salary, correct? She gonna get Amanda's salary, and Amanda's gonna get her salary. I don't know why we have that, that, that employee is still making the ways that he was making before, so he actually got demoted, but he didn't lose the money. So he has less responsibility and more cash, makes no sense to me. And I, I could be looking at it wrong, but that's what it looks like to me.
That's, and it, and it does, okay, it looks like that, when this person was in this other job and was, was making the money, it was at the time, not at the time of race time, do you know what I'm saying? So if he did not get a raise on top of this race, it would have been what his merit increase was. It wasn't this big huge increase, and he did get a merit. It made up for it. We sit down and explain this. And he was fine with it, and it worked. And yes, he, he's not in the same capacity as he was, but the pay was not that much more than what the merit would be, and so he got the increase to go in the position. And it's just because he's been here so long.
So I guess the...
How much is the difference we're talking about?
It's a pretty big difference.
Eighteen dollars, twenty-one dollars, ten dollars, fifteen dollars?
I'm gonna find a paper now, Leslie. Twenty-five and seventeen.
And the seventeen is the person that has the greater responsibility?
Yes, more the administrative is responsible. But it's just that he assists somebody else with administrative.
But he moved into that position, he took a new position, or was he moved into that?
He was moved into a position.
And that new position pays seventeen, and the person that was, that is under him is at twenty-five, is what I'm understanding, that's what I'm understanding.
He's really not his supervisor. I'm telling you, sometimes it's bad with that ability.
There's a lot of start over.
Yeah, that's why we're, that's why we had a conversation, so you can, so you can improve our understanding of like casualty, you have a...
We have a position here, and we have somebody in the room, okay? And this position here was moved back down here, okay? And when he got moved up here, and he got an increase for moving up there, it was not a large increase, cause his salary was... And when he got moved up here, and he got an increase for moving up there, it was not a large increase, because his salary was already so high for being here for so many years. Okay? And so when this employee came back down here, he did not get a pay cut. But it's not because it was unfair to let him keep his pay, he did not have a merit rate that year. And move on to take it. He sat down and figured it out, and it was not a big difference, what's the difference?
And that may be right, but I don't wanna come back later.
Right, no, no, I understand exactly what you're saying, but now we have another person that was in a position that started helping with some of the administrative things going on, that we need to help with in that specific area, because perhaps, again, that they're not tied up in that area, okay? They've been left open, and so we, promoting him, maybe, I'm telling you, the choice of vocabulary, to lead foreman is not the right choice that we have. Just because he makes less, but there is no way we can start him at what somebody that's been here for ten years makes.
So he should be an assistant?
Well, no, because he's not an assistant to the person that was brought down.
Thirty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars lead foreman, fifty-three thousand, fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents foreman. Those are the numbers.
Like I said, sometimes the titles don't always, and might need to be a change in title, just to save the confusion for the budget.
And, and, and I'm-
Probably would.
I, I would, I might agree with that, I just wanna make sure it doesn't come back six months from now, if it's right, it's right, but if it's not right, then you fix it now.
I mean, but I don't think that the person that was in a position was making. Because we counted the merit rates.
So the lead foreman, who, who does this foreman report to?
Both of them report the same person.
So neither one of them is a supervisor?
No, well, no, exactly.
Neither one of them is a supervisor, neither one of them supervises anybody else, they report to somebody else. So they shouldn't be foremen, at all.
You know, when these guys make up titles, mostly, some of these titles here have been like this for so long.
I understand.
And they changing and changing, and what we need to do is get a consistent pattern, I just have to sit down and change the title.
Yeah, because the foreman is someone that has people that report to him. If neither one of them has anybody that reports to them, they're not a foreman, neither one of them.
There's, like I said, some of these titles, I understand, need to be changed, and I understand what Jane was saying, I understand, but we need to think the budget differently.
Does everybody understand, or not understand?
No, one hundred percent.
I, I understand, and I'm gonna go back to, I think, department, um, uh, ministry department, whatever. I don't know why they're not able to do their own administrative work. I mean, why do a lot of our administrative work? But this particular one, we try.
Okay, you, we replaced at one time, okay? We took positions and we separated them, okay, and that was like a four or five person department, maybe four, and we separated it into a one and a three, okay? Now we have it back down to a two. And we have one person doing one thing, and three over here doing another thing.
But neither one of them-
And we're still talking about the street department.
Doesn't matter what department, no matter what department it is.
I, I, you know, I can explain it, like I'm saying, there was not a specific reason to cut this guy's pay, that's why it was not bad.
Other than he was-
So the department used to be a group of five, or whatever you said, and now it's only a group of two?
No.
He doesn't have one super, there's one supervisor, there's two different departments, we have one supervisor for one department, and one supervisor for the other.
Okay.
Now we have just one supervisor over both departments.
Okay.
So that's why he needs, he has something that helps him that missionary, because instead of just running one department, he wants two departments.
Okay, that makes sense.
Oh, well, that's actually more because-
There's four.
Yeah.
There's four departments, so it was easier for one person to administrate, and when you're only running one department, which is four departments.
But now he's running this one supervisor running four departments, and he's got two people under him.
We got four, two, one, two, but the one that's a foreman, or administrative foreman.
We're making administrative assistants, then, whatever.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if they don't have anybody to report into, if they don't have anybody to report into them, they're not a foreman.
It wouldn't make sense to have another supervisor?
No.
I mean, they, they got it structured the way it needs to be.
They just want, I know, we need to fix it.
Needs to fix the language.
That's all we need to do is to fix the language, but by the time we have this budget printed, and by the time we had it done, and redone, we have everything ready, and we were, I knew it was gonna come out, we will fix that, we can fix the language.
Yeah, I mean, if they're not reporting anybody, they're not a foreman, if they, they don't have anybody they supervise, they're not a foreman.
See, they each have, I, I'm gonna put y'all together a, uh-
Explain it.
Yeah.
It's a chart, I said, a chart, we can see it.
Of who's, uh, who answers to who. In, in little bubbles, without names.
Which one? Just to see, we can see it.
You're okay, Leslie. You did all day at work, and then you did it all on high rise. So it's more of an issue with the flow chart than it is with the, it's a name, that's all it is.
It's not as if the foreman, uh, the one that's considered foreman, the, the laborers do not report to them, but they're watching over them as they're doing their daily duties. But at the end of the day, they all report to them, I mean, to us. I don't know if that makes better sense, but-
Well, as I said, I mean, if, if nobody reports to them, they're not a foreman. The foreman has to have someone reporting.
Did I turn into the buzz on that one?
No, it's okay, there's, there's been, there's been years this title's been changed, people gave all these-
Did it show?
No. So we keep yours, or this.
See, you want to keep this?
No, yeah, we can do this.
It's on, it's on our tablet, though, right?
Yeah, so it's on your tablet, you wanna track, you can track it, yeah.
The only question on the bottom line.
See, some's gonna happen, some are still changing on the bottom line, but they told enough, they need to.
Okay.
I hope so, so much, but we can do this.
I hope so. I'm gonna keep, uh, my original here. You can keep that one. Okay, uh, motion to the term.
I think motion to the term. I say-
Okay, hold on, did everybody do what they wanted out of the budget workshop? Did you understand?
Just that.
Don't I have another, I mean, we found, yes, sir, there, there have any more? Nothing. Yes. August thirteenth?
Well, August thirteenth, we just have a common note, recap, right?
Yes, but you have, you have a break, Katie.
Right, right, yeah, we're on the budget side.
Pizza.